Dunedin Host, Mrs Ruifia Karawana. Michael Carlin.
Hello. Welcome.
You've been here all day.
Kouta Kato, ngamehika Kouta Kato, kua Kailua Ruifia Karawana tōkenua no na puia hoko haato nei. My name, as we said, is Kailua Ruifia Karawana and I currently chair the Dunedin Host membership. We have submitted last year, we were quite strong about how we wanted the new marketing agency to work. Obviously, we have a vested interest in ensuring that the way that we deliver that compelling destination message that is written within the economic development strategy, we have a vested interest in ensuring that it's a marketing promise that we can meet. It's a marketing promise that is one that we can tie into and pin our coattails to in a lot of ways, but it's also one that represents what we think in field Dunedin should be represented in the international and domestic arena. We are aware that the new agency will be in-house and we're committed to working with the new agency. But I guess it's just, we were quite firm in wanting to put a submission through for this year to talk about the fact that we want to try and ensure that we've got a... we don't want to lose traction. And I think when I look at how Dunedin was placed four years ago when I first moved back to Dunedin, we have lost traction within the tourism industry just a little. When we look at things like not so much from destination numbers or from a... even from the respect of the visitors that are coming, but very much so from how many businesses are going through Qualmark, for example. That's dropped from 60 to 49. Now, that either highlights the fact that Qualmark isn't doing its job or we aren't doing our job to, I guess, highlight the importance of being involved in some of those marketing strategies. So we want to ensure that this new marketing agency has funding ring-fenced for tourism, that they're actually going to continue to market our city the way that we hope and can input into the process to market our city because we are delivering that promise to a lot of people who walk through our doors. We see great benefit in an autonomous board. My background, and I've spent 15 years in destination marketing and a lot of that at the government level with Tourism New Zealand. And a lot of what I've seen with regions who have an internal-facing marketing agency, one that is housed within council, it does struggle to be proactive and reactive and it does struggle to be able to, I guess, meet the demands of what we need to be able to meet to drive economic injection into the city. It's one of the things that, you know, destination marketing, particularly for a region like ours, it's vital. I've seen regions in the past where funding has been decreased to market a destination or a regional tourism organisation has been disbanded and, you know, created into a... or formed into another function. For example, in the Waikato, they disbanded the tourism aspect of it completely. And then again, in the... in the Wanganui area, they actually tied it all together with the eyesight. In both cases, you saw businesses going under, you saw visitor numbers dropping off, you saw the look and the feel of how those regions were being picked up internationally and domestically drop away. And I guess we want to make sure as an industry board and as an industry association that we've actually got and maintain some momentum and bring some of that momentum back. And I know it's there because I've seen it in my own business that I'm... well, in Cadbury's business that I manage for them, there is growth, there is opportunity. There's $24 billion can be attributed to the tourism industry last year and then is expected to grow to $41 billion in 2025. So we've got a lot of opportunity and we just want to make sure that the agency that's driving that for the city is actually engaging with us to ensure we can tap into a little bit more of that $41 billion. And one of our... the final issue I just wanted to bring up, which is in the submission as well, is that there is a difference between destination management and destination marketing. And I think what we have done as a city very well in the past is destination management. But what we haven't necessarily done as well as we could have is in the destination marketing arena. When we're talking about destination marketing, you're wanting to drive awareness, push intention, create preference and then create conversion. And we want to make sure that the agency understands this very clear and distinct that those are two different aspects to the same thing, absolutely. But one, you can't have one stronger than the other, otherwise we will lose momentum and we will lose impetus. So I guess that's all the points I wanted to make today. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, councillor?
We've heard from several people that ring-fencing tourism would be a good thought. Is the thought behind that partly that somehow its funding would be able to increase when we haven't got any money the way other people's wouldn't? Or when you say ring-fenced?
I think that point is along the lines of is that we don't, you know, we obviously don't have a lot of money, that's fairly understandable. But it's about saying, we don't want to lose what little money that has been able to be put into marketing the city when you move forward with the new marketing agency. Because when you've got an operator... oh, sorry. When you've got an agency which might have multiple mandates to include, so to market to a multiple different type of visitor to Dunedin, whether it be education, whether it be visitor attractions, whether it be to drive investment, the message can be the same, but sometimes if you're focusing in one area, it might detract from the other. And what we don't want to do is lose visitor numbers because we're concentrating in one other area, for instance.
So you're happy that ring-fencing might mean that you get no increase next year from last year? It's just neither is anyone else?
I just don't want to go backwards. If that's all I'm saying. If we can go forward, then, you know, jump over the moon, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think tourism is a great enabler.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. Kia ora, Kailua. You note that you see as very important the new agency's short and long-term KPIs and I couldn't agree more. I'm just wondering as to what you think that should look like. Tourism Dunedin was largely focused on visitor nights, which is problematic for all sorts of reasons. I wonder whether Dunedin Host are interested in continuing that kind of metric or whether there are other things that we should be looking at? What kinds of KPIs do you think this new agency should be looking at, particularly reference to tourism?
I think, I mean, visitor nights and visitor spend are quite quantifiable. You can look at that and go, oh, look, you know, I've got an extra night's stay or I've got an extra $20 out of every person who's coming. But there are... we need to understand, are we driving visitor satisfaction? That should be in the track. Other people who are coming here are satisfied with what we're delivering as an operation. And I think that as a marketing agency, if you can track what that visitor attraction is, then you know whether you're actually delivering the marketing promise that you're out there saying. So if you're an awareness key and what you're talking about to the people who are looking to Dunedin as either a regional or international destination, that if you know that you're ringing their bell and ticking their boxes, then you know that you're on the right track. So I don't think necessarily that visitor nights and visitor spend are the only metrics that we should be looking at from a KPI perspective, but I do think that we should be looking more to what... how Dunedin is perceived and the messages that people, I guess, garner when they have either been here or are looking to come here. And there are ways that you can do that. And I know in our business, we track our satisfaction all the time because it's the only way we can really see whether our marketing dollar is actually delivering what we needed to deliver.
Would your membership be interested, do you think, in helping us to capture that more qualitative data, if you like?
You would have to do it through the industry. I think this is in terms of being able to speak to the right people, unless you had the type of money like Tourism New Zealand does to just ask anybody who happens to be walking through the airport, whether they're here for visitors, holidays or business. So you would need to ask the industry. And I think one of the things that I've noticed since I've been here is that there are a lack... there is a lack of research available in the, you know, for us to know how we are actually doing in that respect. I know how we are doing in Cadbury's... from a Cadbury perspective and I wave the flag for research whenever anyone is willing to sit down and listen to me. So I think the members would be very happy to be involved as long as we've got a consistent questionnaire to actually ask.
Thanks. Councillor Thompson?
One of the things that we're very good at in New Zealand is when something's not going quite as we'd like, is to quickly and easily identify that it's the other bloke's fault. And I wonder, it seems to me that quite a lot of submissions around this particular issue are setting us, I don't mean deliberately, but are risk-setting us up for exactly that kind of thing. Had this been put in place just for the global recession, we would probably be getting a whole lot of submitters coming along and saying that ever since they started this new marketing arrangement, the arse has fallen out of purism and it's all your fault. So it seems to me, in terms of our relationships going forward, that it's really important that we put in place things that will reduce that kind of problem. And I'm wondering if you've got any thoughts around, from a process perspective, how we reduce that? So if things go up or things go down, we're able to see past the easy blame game?
Yep. I think it's... I think one of the things that, whatever the structure looks like, whoever ends up being in the role, the issue and the breakdown that I have seen is the communication side of things. Not being able to input or have a chance to actually talk about what or how we as an industry see that compelling message and putting that forward. I mean, one of the things that we'd love to see is something that we can actually all come together and put our messages behind, a consistent message. One of the things that what I've talked about at certain meetings and at certain times through the four years that I've been here and two years within the Dunedin Host Board is that there's no story behind the brand. There has to be a story behind the brand. There has to be a way for us to tell Dunedin's story in a way that becomes compelling for people to come back and send others. Because if we don't, then we're missing the track. I know that the way that we, in terms of Cadbury, market our business and the way that Capeworld markets ourselves as a tourism operation, I know that's working because I've seen it in black and white. So I think it's about trying to ensure that the messages that we're doing isn't trying to play the blame game, but it's about opening that communication, ensuring those bridges that have been burnt and there have been a few are rebuilt and we all have the opportunity to sit around a table and talk about what is our compelling destination message and putting that out forward. And not have it just be saying that Dunedin's a great cruise ship destination, which is what it states in the economic development strategy.
So that all makes perfect sense to me, but I suppose it also begs the question of what's got in the way? You just said that we don't have it now.
No.
So what's got in the way of that happening up till now that we might be able to avoid going forward?
Yep. I think what's got in the way is the lack of communication and lack of being able to feed into the process. I also think it's around, we have... there was a lot of work done on a brand, but not much done on the brand story that supports it. I think there's a lot of opportunity that we have to... we've got a lot of great businesses and great minds in the tourism in Dunedin to actually come together and build a brand story. If all you've got is a brand that sits out there with nothing substantial to sit behind it and you can't articulate it, then you've got an issue. And I think that's one of the barriers that has been in place for us, especially for us as a tourism industry. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you. It's an ongoing dialogue.
Absolutely.
Councillor McTavish?
I was just looking online to see if I can find out, but in terms of the total number of tourism operators in Dunedin, what proportion of those are your members? So do you represent the industry in total or is it a portion of?
It's a membership. We have over 80 members within our membership. And we have representatives across transport, accommodation and obviously attractions. And I think we're a good representation of what the industry in Dunedin has. But when we go out and we talk to our members, if it is to those 80, having said that, there are non-members who we quite often are engaged with, whether that be through packaging or just general tourism conversations as well.
Kia ora, Kailua. Thank you for your submission. Mr Clearwater?
Welcome. The next five minutes is yours. I won't take that long. My name's Steve Clearwater. I'm a farmer, contractor and quarry owner and I live and work in the Portobello Peninsula area. I've done so all my life. My submission is about the order of events for the safety improvements on the Portobello roading network. I'd like to applaud the DCC for starters, what they've done the last few years for their progress to date. And it's the staging of the work that's proposed that's the key thing. You really got to stick with that current plan. I mean, this was decided years and years ago, lots of consultation, lots of meetings, a lot of times got into it. It was pretty obvious that it was a safety improvement thing that was going to benefit the communities and that was always the priority. Where the cycleway things come from, everyone seemed to call it the cycleway, but that was never the intention. It was always the safety improvement program. The community benefits of the schools and the residents far outweigh any perceived benefit that cyclists will receive. I drive trucks every day on this road. And the most dangerous sections are the Harrington Point Road, which is obviously being sorted out very soon and the order can't change with that. And then the Portobello-Broad Bay section, which is a contentious issue. I would urge you strongly stick with the current plan that is in place. This section of road has two very tight blind corners. And when towing a trailer, a lot of guts is really needed to commit to these corners. You always cross your fingers that there's no tour bus coming because it's just tough luck if there is, really. It's amazing. There's never been another major crash there. I challenge any of you, if you want to get in a mini bus and follow me in these sections of road, that's the key thing. This section of road, you just can't drive a truck and trailer, especially if you're semi, a transporter trailer. You've just got to go around the wrong side of the road. Now, that to me screams out that it's the worst section and therefore it should be the priority to fix. The road from MacBay to town is adequate. It's a reasonable road. For most trucks, trailers, they can all navigate it, no issues. You get to that Portobello section when you're in trouble, you know. We're currently carting 2,000 tonnes of logs from Purpasinlet over there, so it's a good opportunity if you want to follow us, get in behind. I do hope also that when the voting comes, that councillors will directly benefit from this decision. And I'm perfectly referring to the mayor and the ZEPA, both being cyclists and they both live in the MacBay section. And I feel that they've got no real affinity with the Portobello-Broad Bay section of road, so they should opt out, really. And why this whole round of consultations even taking place? I mean, I understand you had a bit of forced submissions and a few verbals. And it started this whole raft posting out. It's just a big fat waste of money. I thought it was decided years and years ago what the order of events were and it's... I feel that someone's railroading it and trying to push it through. Thank you.
Well, maybe I shouldn't kick off the questions to seek some clarity on your written submission about what you were referring to when you referred to pleasing me because I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, if the order of events is changed to get the MacBay-to-town section going ahead over and above Portobello, you live directly in the middle of that, you cycle and work regularly and you stand to benefit for anyone in Portobello gets their road wide.
So you're assuming that you know already what my preference will be, are you?
I've got a good feeling if you live there and cycle regularly, yeah.
Well, you don't. Councillor Wilson?
There are a number of submissions about this and some of the submissions are actually that we progress the project quicker and maybe at multi-sites. I'm interested in your knowledge as a truck driver and as quarry owner because... so I'm going to ask several questions if that's all right. The first one is, there's a submission that suggests that there's six... almost seven hectares of quite deep... quantitatively, I haven't worked it out, of reclamation to be done. My understanding is that that will increase truck movement substantially along that road.
Trucks only travel on that road for a reason and, you know...
Can I finish the question and then you may not be prejudging what I'm going to ask? The safety issues, depending on where that quarry or where that fill comes from. And I'm... one of the questions when Mike and myself went out there was where the fill will come from. And do you know from your quarry experience whether that fill is likely to come from Dunedin end or from the peninsula itself?
It'll all come down to price. The Portobello-Broad Bay section is of course far closer to my quarry. It's probably 6-7K. So it's a likelihood that if I can produce the right price, that yes, the rock will all come from that for my quarry.
The other question I had is where do you live? Because it's not... you don't give that detail.
I live in Papunarila.
Papunarila, thank you.
Yeah, just 5K from Portobello.
How would you feel as a rate payer in that area if we were to increase the speed of the work, that it was a targeted rate in order to do that, rather than a general rate increase throughout the city? Obviously, some areas will benefit from this work substantially more, as you've said, you will, than others.
That was never really proposed to be targeted rate.
No, and it's just in light of people asking for it to be sped up. We're looking at all options. So it's not about what we have now. If we were to speed it up, and I think there's a general agreement that the project is a long-term one, if we were to speed it up?
No, I don't think any rates increases or targeted rates would be... you had the current plan and it made a lot of sense.
So you're happy for it to be a 10-year project?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Thompson?
I was going to say something I'd later regret by responding to an idiotic written comment, but I won't. But just in light of the fact that you have a quarry down the other end, do you think that you might have something to benefit?
Oh, I absolutely do. I'd benefit from the other part.
So you don't think you should sit back?
Well, taken light, you know. I'm trying to support the communities. Not many people have actually come forward with a chance to stand up and talk about it. We've already taken a lot of rock right through to the Vauxhall end, so we're going to get something out of it anyway. It's...
And your written comment, you feel, really helps your cause?
Was that about the mayor? Yeah, well, at the beginning, we had Portobello, he's the one that said that he cycles regularly. He's the one that fell off in the dark.
You didn't say in which Vauxhall section. You didn't say he doesn't use it?
Oh, maybe he does use that section.
All right. Are there any further questions? Thank you for your submission.
Appreciate it.
Mr Thompson? Spokes Dunedin. Welcome, Robert.
Thank you very much. Just like to pass around a little bit of additional information that since I've already presented it to the ZTA, since making the submission, which I'll refer to in just a minute. So for those of you who I haven't had a chance to meet personally and may not know me, my name is Robert Thompson. I'm the Chair of Spokes Dunedin. So Spokes is Dunedin Cycling Advocacy Organisation. And we... our aim is to speak out for everyone who rides a bike or who would like to ride a bike in Dunedin. I'd like to start off by just thanking the council for everything it's been doing for cycling over the last year. I think we've been seeing quite a lot of good progress over the last year. And I'd also like to congratulate the council for taking these initiatives. I think they contribute to making Dunedin a more livable city, a more human city. And it's initiatives like this that will make Dunedin one of the world's best small cities. Now, Dunedin is a great place to live and the Otago Peninsula is really one of the crown jewels for Dunedin. And while this project is a safety project primarily, it also does provide an additional amenity. Not only a safety improvement, but walking... well, I guess it's a sort of an amenity if you consider safety an amenity. But it will improve safety and access for pedestrians and cyclists. So just like the Esplanade, John Wilson Drive, it's not only something for the people who live just on the peninsula, but this forthcoming infrastructure is something for everyone in the city. Now, we think that the progression from the city end makes the most sense, but I'll discuss it in a little bit while I think there is some compromise to be made as we put in our submission. And I hope you do... it is... we put in kind of a long submission and I know you have heaps of submissions to read, but I hope you do get a chance to look through it. Vauxhall to Glenfyllic, from a cyclist's perspective, is really the most dangerous section. There's more traffic there, obviously because it's closer to the city. There's also more cyclists there because it's closer to the city. You've got a lot of recreational cyclists who come from the city, out to the peninsula and back. A lot of people ride out just as far as McAndrew Bay at lunchtime because it's a nice, about an hour out to McAndrew Bay and back from the city centre. So it's a nice lunchtime ride. And the lack of consistency and connectivity that you get from the current layout where the city end is sort of deprioritised really creates a barrier to usability for the largest number of people who use it. So I can talk a minute about the safety issues from the cyclist's perspective and refer you to the... I'll just hand it out. All of them and forgot to keep them. So this is some information that I've obtained from NZTA recently. And on the... the graph on the left shows the number of crashes between 2008 and 2012, which involve cyclists. So the left-hand part of this graph is urban crashes and the right-hand part is rural crashes. And here, urban roads refer to those with speeds of less than 70 kilometres per hour. So for all intents and purposes, Portobello Road, especially between Vauxhall and Glenfyllic, is, for all intents and purposes, a rural road.
Is it 70 or least, or less than 70?
Well, that's a good question, where the 70 mark lies, but roughly 70 and less, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm just saying that quite a few places are 70 and so they come into the... so it's 70 or less?
On Portobello Road? Yeah. Well, that's a good question. I would posit that between Vauxhall and Glenfyllic, you have a lot of traffic that's moving faster than 70 kilometres per hour, from my personal experience, being out there quite often. So just to look at... just a quick look at this graph. The point is that while most crashes involving cyclists occur in urban centres, the severity of crashes increases on rural roads. And the primary factors there are speed and lack of clearance when overtaking. And what it shows here is that you're more likely to be involved in a crash in an urban setting, but if you're involved in a crash in a rural setting, you're much more likely to die or be seriously injured. So over 80% of the fatal crashes on rural roads are not at intersections. And about 70% of serious injuries on rural roads are not at intersections. And it turns out that most of the serious injuries and fatalities on rural roads are actually on relatively straight roads where the speeds are higher. And this is particularly relevant to that section between Glenfyllic and Vauxhall, where the road is reasonably straight. It's straight enough to allow you to go quite fast, but it's also deceptive in that the visibility is actually not that good. So the high speeds coupled with the poor visibility leads to risky overtaking manoeuvres. And so this creates a sort of a ripe opportunity for quite a serious accident involving a cyclist. And there are a lot of existing users out there who are cycling out there on a daily basis. And now in our submission, I don't know if you have that in front of you, but we also have a graph, again from NZTA, of the importance of speed, relative speed, on the probability of death in a crash. And you can see that the probability of death rises quite dramatically for impact speeds higher than about 30 kilometres per hour. And it turns out that on rural roads, not only are most of these fatal and serious injuries, well, fatal in particular, fatal injuries... fatal injuries, fatalities, not only do they occur on straight roads, but they occur from behind. People are hit from behind, so it's not a head-on situation. So even for a cyclist travelling between 20 and 30 kilometres per hour, being hit from behind by a car travelling between 70 and 80 kilometres per hour, you're still in that sort of 50 to 60 kilometre per hour impact speed on this graph. And the probability of death in that case is quite high. So in particular, this stretch between Vauxhall to Glenfyllic, as I said, you have a higher amount of traffic, more cyclists, greater speed, also a lack of width and risky overtaking manoeuvres. So this is a very high-risk section. And to be honest, it's quite ripe environment for a fatality and it's a little bit surprising that we haven't had a more serious injury. Back in 2012, we called attention to the dooring risk, particularly on Cumberland Street. And in particular, we pointed out the hospital block as being a particularly prone location for that type of incident to occur. And unfortunately, it wasn't too much longer before that actually happened and someone died. And aside from the one ways, based on the number of cyclists and the number of road... the number of road users on Portobello Road, I'd say that, uh, that, that section in particular on Portobello Road is, is ripe for a, a serious accident. Um, I would say that, from a cycling perspective, the, the other sections are of a lower priority, in particular, the, the sections where it's past, um, past Glenfyllic in particular, the road becomes much more windy. And these, these curves, these, these, this winding road naturally moderates the speed of vehicles. Uh, there's also less traffic further out, and there are fewer cyclists as well. So, although we think that the, um, progression from the city end makes the most sense, uh, we also recognize the interests of the, of the Peninsula communities and the benefits that they'll gain, uh, from having this. But, I would also say that there is existing off-road connectivity within both Broadbay and Portobello communities, although, uh, I freely admit that there's poor interconnectivity between those two communities. And the, the section of road between Broadbay and, and Portobello is, is not, is not great, it's, it's quite, uh, quite risky as well. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about the, the schools, access to schools in Broadbay and Portobello, but if you look at the details of the, of the proposed work, um, these schools are not directly serviced by, by the road widening. Um, I would also just point out that, that the Portobello community actually rejected the boardwalk between the Boat Club and the Cannon, so there's actually no widening that's going to be done in that, on that section of road. Um, so from a cyclist's perspective, it, it seems like these sections are more of an amenity than, than, than a direct, uh, safety improvement. Um, so, so we, we do recognize that these are important for those communities, and it'll certainly improve those communities. Um, so, we think that there is a compromise to be had, but that the, the Portobello to, uh, sorry, the, uh, the Vauxhall to, um, Glenfyllic section is certainly the highest priority in terms of, in terms of cyclist safety, anyway. Obviously, the best option would be to bring forward the completion date, as has been discussed, and I know that, uh, this may not be possible, but it's certainly something that, uh, everyone should be doing their best to, to, um, to try to achieve. And I think there's some solid economic reasons for, for doing so. Um, we've heard about changes and potential changes in NZTA co-funding, uh, which means that we could save a significant amount of money in the long run by completing it sooner. Um, I think there's also an opportunity cost in the tourism sector by not completing it sooner. Um, some of our councillors here know better than I the, the economic impacts of the Central Otago Rail Trail, and how that's been a lifeline for the communities out there. And I think that, um, tourism in Dunedin could see similar gains. So, so in the long run, it could in fact pay for itself. Uh, there's also other economic factors that I won't get into, but are, are in our submission, and I encourage you to take a look at. Uh, there's another thing that I would like to, uh, bring up real quick, that's actually not in the submission. And that's, and maybe this is, is, it's kind of a council staff issue, and it's maybe better directed at, uh, Dr. Minros and, and Mr. Avery over there. Um, and that's a question of upskilling some of our, uh, DCC staff. So there are precious few cycling dollars that are being given out. Um, and we want to get the best outcomes for these, for the investments, sort of, um, what we're getting. So we want to make sure that we get infrastructure that works and that cyclists will use. And what I'm finding is that a lot of time, we, we get these out-of-town consultants who don't really know anything about Dunedin, and, and don't actually know that much about cycling. Um, I've gotten several examples where, where we've been given the plans from the DCC that have been drawn up by some, some outside, out-of-town consultants, and really, they're terrible. Um, these people, whoever's doing it, obviously doesn't really know the basics about, uh, cycling infrastructure. Um, so I think, I think we're, we're losing a lot of money, um, we're wasting a lot of money on some of these, some of these consultants, when I think that, uh, our in-house people could be doing a similar job, or should know, um, should be able to lift a few things and, and pick out the basic design flaws. Um, and there's, there's also a lot of cycling stuff coming up, both in, in the central city and for, for Portobello Road. So I think it, it, uh, makes sense to upscale some of the in-house, in-house transport staff, so that they can, are better prepared to, to deal with this and some of the, some of the stuff we get from some of these consultants.
Thank you, Robert. Questions, councillor Wilson.
Uh, look, I just, um, just to clarify, Ian, because I think we have to be fair to the previous submitter included, um, you obviously live in Irvine Road with Cove and have some benefit. Has your submission been through all of the spokes members and where do they live?
Uh, so, this submission was done, uh, with the spokes committee, and sent around, we, so we have, we have sort of multiple levels in spokes, so we have a committee of six people, a standing committee of six people, and then we have a larger, sort of, reference group of about 15, and then we have our larger membership, which is, which is about 600. Um, and so the submission was drawn up by the committee and some of the particularly interested people from the reference group, and then it was passed around the rest of the reference group as well.
Okay. Um, and I don't think you can speak for spokes on this, but I'm gonna ask you as an individual. Um, you, you suggest speeding it up, which has been suggested by some other, uh, submitters as well. Um, would you consider it fair if there was a targeted rate for the area that is most likely to benefit, most greatly for it, to speed that up? Or would you personally think that that is something that should be spread citywide?
Um, oh, that's a good question, and, again, as, as I said at the beginning, I think this is something that's, uh, that benefits everyone in the city, and there are a lot of users who come from the city that, uh, use it. Obviously, I do live on the Peninsula. So I personally would be, would be willing, but, uh, you know, I, I have a clear interest in, in using facilities myself, so.
It's, it's hard to tell someone in the strait tarry who are paying substantial rates on a farm that they are going to benefit from it.
Well, that's, that's true, but then again, I pay, I pay rates that, uh, that pay for things out in the strait taries, so.
It's not my church, look, I'm not, we don't, you know, one of the ones.
Right, well, but, but it's, it's a question of whether you want to have a sort of pay to place aside, you know, I mean.
Are there any further, councillor Thompson?
Well, look, I'm, I'm not sure whether mine's a question, well, it's not, I know it's not a question of, of, uh, Sparks or Robert, but, uh, I just wonder whether, like, I had foreshadowed a question relating to this to start around with, around what the rules might be in terms of bringing, um, something forward in terms of the transit contribution, uh, given that there, there is clearly an additional cost to council in doing that, but it's possible that that additional cost would be offset by longer-term savings because of the possibility, as you've alluded to, um, there would be a, uh, there is likely to be a reduction in the, you're going forward in the contribution from transit, so our portion of it might be higher, our portion of the cost might be higher if we do it later.
Can I, can I, can I suggest that that is a valid question to inform the deliberations, but we don't need to know the answer now, unless it's, the answer's going to clarify another question to the submitter?
No, well, that's, that's fair enough, but I, I suppose it's just signaling, because the deliberations are actually only a few days away, so.
No, no, I appreciate that, but we've got very limited time now, Mike, and that question's gonna inform the deliberations and we can get the input from the start of that. Councillor Maxfield.
Thank you, um, your submission, Robert. The, the question that I have is around the South Dunedin work that's currently underway, and I appreciate points that you guys have made. Just thinking in terms of outcomes from here, I guess council has a couple of different options available to it. One is to pause the work where it currently is, revisit plans, and do that in conjunction with the community, I suppose.
Are you, are you talking, are you talking about a specific?
Yes, specifically that the rollout of that, um, three-staged package of routes, which is currently underway in South, in South Dunedin. Um, another option is to let that rollout finish, monitor that as a particular set of interventions and, and look at how well that works or not. Um, or, maybe there's another option, which I haven't thought of. Do you, do you guys give a specific suggestion around the way forward that you would like to see improvements for the South Dunedin route, given where they're at now?
Uh, no, I mean, I, I don't think we should, we should pause, and I think that would have ramifications for, for future funding, and probably council staff could tell you better about, I don't really know about that kind of stuff very well. Um, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to, just to be careful about what we're putting on the ground to make sure that it's the best outcome for the investment. Um, and obviously, a lot of it's already in progress or complete, um, you know, things like the, uh, Portsmouth Drive shared path widening is already complete, that's great. Um, Chor Street is, is nearing completion, other bits are nearing completion. So some of those packages are already, already finished or in train. Um, so I, I'm, I'm not sure which parts of it you're talking about pausing, but, but yeah, certainly, the, the, I think the process, and at least in, in going forward, um, should maybe be a little bit more considered about just what goes on the ground to make sure we get the best outcome.
Good question. Thank you, Robert. Submissions appreciated. Ms. Evans.
Should be Lani Evans, I'm evidently not Lani Evans.
I was still looking wide enough for you.
Sorry?
I was still looking wide enough for you.
A few of you are looking rather, uh, erring towards sleep.
Right. West Harbour Beautification Trust is the one you're speaking for?
Correct.
Right, and you're standing in for Lani.
I am. Uh, Lani has just texted me as the CEO of a, um, very successful upstart company, a cloud-based company in Dunedin.
Startup.
Startup company, uh, which is doing very well, she can't spare the time, so she's, in her words, asked me to wing it, so I shall, uh, endeavor to do so.
Have you got a copy for submission with Mike?
I, I have also picked that up, so, yes, there's a few marks on it. Let me put these on. Okay, the, um, first page of submission is obviously very evident, introducing ourselves, and as you know, we came along to the, uh, to a public forum about three weeks ago, just to introduce ourselves, uh, as a group. And broadly, the trust has been formed in essence to replace what was previously the State Highway 88 Beautification Trust, which did some sterling and phenomenal work on Dunedin's West Harbour, and people can see evidence of that today. Um, number one, uh, point in the submission, of course, cyclical control, and I alluded that to that earlier separately, uh, via the Chalmers Community Board, and further down, I, I read that the West Harbour Beautification Trust would like to see an increased effort from council to address this problem locally, uh, and the trust is eager to work in partnership. Um, of course, as I recorded, and I can, um, uh, refer to that again, that that has taken place two days ago, I had a meeting with Mick Rees and Lisa Wheeler, and the West Harbour Beautification Trust was very kindly invited along to that. And, uh, come June, uh, July 1st, there should be a report out, uh, in which the trust would be involved, so pat on the back to Parks and Recs of that. Um, and actually, the first, uh, the first, I think the first project will be looking at those not more than 20 to 30 young trees, which, um, uh, councillor Vandervis, I know, earlier alluded to using wood, but these are literally fire, fire starters rather than keeping you snug and warm. Uh, number two, the Adopt a Box scheme, it's just very evident what that does, uh, been very successful, it was a sort of a pilot scheme for the trust, just to see if we could work in partnerships with the, um, the shop owners. Um, we had lots of inquiries, and next year, um, I think we'll have another list that goes well beyond the number of boxes available, and particularly beautiful in cruise ship season, because a lot of the boxes are just next to where the cruise ship passengers enter the high street, and, um, many hundreds of them can be seen clicking pictures of whatever they are, begonias and carnations and whatever wonderful plants are in any given time. Number three, cycle walkway maintenance, that'll be a major part of what the trust tries to achieve, um, in partnership with Rotary, who are gonna be doing some great work at the beginning of the cycleway, um, and you can read in, in that the trust is in the process of fundraising to beautify sitting area near the St. Nenar's End of the current path. We have fundraised already for that, we do have the money in place, and thankfully, we're working in, uh, alongside David Blair, who many of you will be aware of, who is, um, um, one of the best people to have on board when you're doing native plantings. And the reason, I think, we've probably written the bit at the end is just to make council, um, aware of the fact that there'll be no, hopefully, no or very little maintenance costs beyond minor weed control, which you, it's, you're contracted to do anyway. Uh, number four is just straightforward, obviously, supporting the, the wonderful biodiversity fund, which, uh, obviously gives out money and, um, produces great outcomes to the city. Number five, obviously, supporting food resilience. Um, food resilience, the 22,000 funding, think it's a great idea, and of, and one of our modus operandi's will be to encourage and educate people in food resilience in the West Harbour area. Onto number six, I don't know how many funding requests you get that are actually a pun, but seed funding, um, for the trust, and I don't even know if I'm allowed to read this bit out that Lani's written, because it's, um, it's sort of a bribe. I'll read it anyway. Tell council that if they fund us, there is a bowl of fruit in it for them at the annual plant submission of 2016, so there you go.
2016?
Two thousand and sixteen. They've got to grow, they've got to bed in and grow, and, um, I think, I think the trust, trust members and community should be first to chomp on the wonderful projects. And we've applied to, uh, for funding, uh, in fact, what we did actually, in the latest Rossay News, what the West Harbour, um, community paper, we just put out a, a little note asking, uh, interested parties in the West Harbour, who would like to have a fruit tree placed on, on new year land, get in touch with us. We've had a phenomenal response to that, so we asked COGS for funding for 30 trees, but we've had far more, um, interest in 30. So we're politely asking councillor, they'd be interested in providing us with five heritage apple trees and five heritage pear trees, total cost $310, so, um, not a, not a great demand. So, yeah, willing to take any questions?
Councillor Wilson.
Um, at that expense, I'm just surprised it's not going to your local community board.
I'm, I'm sure that the, will, the trust will be trotting along there on many occasions in the future.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Steve?
Lani.
For Lani. Okay, thank you for your submission. Okay, thank you, Robert. Uh, Kilda Northcott.
Oh. If you want this submission, it's page 608, volume 2.
Page 608, volume 2.
Petra not coming.
Um, in which way to see him.
Welcome.
Hello. I'm Sane. Um, my name's Kilda Northcott, Kiwana, hello. And I come from a performing arts background, I've been living in Dunedin a while now, but just wanted to provide a bit of color, this is my colorful bit of cloth, and it's a little bit contradictory, because I'm actually talking about native trees, but these are not natives, but I couldn't find anything of native cloth on my home, so, anyway, that's my token color, and this is my wonderful companion, my friend, Stephen. You might, um, recognize Stephen, he's sort of, there's different varieties of him around the place, uh, he and I are getting on really well at the moment, but he's from Stephen's Island. He's a pittosporum, and for some of you that don't know much about pittosporums, um, they, this one in particular grows, uh, I'm quite nervous, my heart was thumping over there, so I'm a little bit shaky. It grows to nine meters, plus two meters, and, uh, it has all these features as it grows up, and you can trim it down and do all that sort of thing, and it has wonderful white perfume flowers on it. So anyway, before I launch into what, I came here to talk, my main point to talk about, I just wanted to say that one of my points in my submission was getting something for rate, my, the rates I pay, and one of the ideas I had was that it would be really cool if council provided a, um, uh, a, a discount on things like traps for storks, opossums, weasels, rats, mice, things like that. I know you can get them from various places, but I, I for one would be someone who, if I could, I'd put a fence around my, my property and put lots of, uh, traps out, but I don't know whether council does that already or not, but, anyway, and I thought I'd just write a few things down. Uh, so one of my big bugbears, and this sort of follows on from what Steve was saying, one of my big bugbears is continued and willy-nilly planting of non-native trees, and the lack of native trees not being planted in and around the city, and the rash of pest trees suffocate in the city landscapes. I know and understand the Otago Regional Council is not acknowledging there is a plague of pest trees out there, to be ignored at great peril, I say. In Dunedin, I feel, there's not really anyone's strength or suburb in the inner city, so to speak, but I feel gives me the sense that I am an alcyro. Perhaps, good old South Dunedin, King Edward Street, I applaud the beautification and landscaping that has recently been completed there. This is at least a beginning. This is at least a beginning. And I also want to acknowledge the extensive work being done by groups like Trees for Babies and the other restoration projects going on around Dunedin, one of which Steve was talking about, I've joined up with recently. And I don't know what happened to Project Crimson, it was a big Meridian energy project, but what happened to Project Crimson, is the council in on that or not? Anyway, why on earth, in this day and age, does the City Council, the Otago Regional Council and Transit Museum continue to plant non-native species? There are areas, roads and streets, that I am deadly satisfied as I drive through them or move through them. They are to name but a few. Highway 88, George Street in the city, in Port Chalmers and the Port Chalmers area. The approach to the airport, tourists coming in, tourists going out. The sweeping avenue road that leads to the airport, sadly, no natives. In front of and behind the railway station, again, no natives. Queen's Garden, I was passing by there recently, and I noticed two trees outside the building that houses the Duke of Wellington pub, again. Two trees just recently planted, little ones, non-natives. Hillside Road, sad, the one-way system south. The planting at the front of the stadium, I went and had a really good look the other day. All the large trees, fantastic planting behind the stadium. All the trees planted at the stadium, non-natives. The big trees planted long underneath and beside the extended highway and motorway out to Bosfield, past Cabisham to the airport, no natives. The little park on Nambast Street, I work around there in Kaipa, no natives. Just recently, two or three years ago, an additional two trees were planted, again. They match the other trees, non-natives. The list goes on and on and on, a travesty, I say. With native and appropriate planting, we have colour, birds, potential, enigma, an authentic point of difference, honouring the past, the present, the future, the mental mark. This is 2014. Hello, the Dunedin could lead the way. Look into the future, Orpaka, Alteiro. A refuge for birds, the people, creating warmth and beauty, the Dunedin. A city of wonder, a city revered for its bravery, a destination, a haven. I have lived in Dunedin for eight years now, and this is what I see, day in and day out, summer, winter, autumn, spring. Breathe, cold, grey, empty, deserted, forlorn, colourless, ugly, sad, forgotten, bereft, abandoned, desolate, barren, altered, disjointed, scrabbling landscape.
Must be tempting to go home, isn't it?
What was that?
Must be tempting to go home, isn't it?
No, no, it's not tempting, because I lived here for a reason. I like Dunedin, it's quaint, it's cute, and it's quiet. I'll tell you a little story, just welcome.
You don't need to be, because you have five minutes.
Okay, well, everybody else has had way longer, so I'm not.
So they haven't, you have five minutes.
I am begging you to see. The Otago Regional Council, Transit of New Zealand and the powers that be, please, 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 in the future to plant natives and animals, don't get me wrong, I love non-natives too, if they have a relevant and practical place in the landscape.
Thank you. Questions?
Any questions?
Questions, councillors? Rana, thank you for your submission.
Thank you, Mary.
Ms Morris, Lee Morris? Holly, sorry, Mr Morris. Now, you're speaking for yourself, I just got a note here on.
I'm speaking for myself, but I also speak for my half Petra Wink.
That's fine, that's okay.
Oh, yes, that's right, you've missed one, thank you. Well, I can be Petra Wink first, or?
Yep, do that, do that. So councillors, this bird.
I won't go back to my chair, I'm staying here.
Councillors, the submission by Petra Wink had been crossed out on my list, but Lee is speaking for her first, and then for himself, that's a far away.
Thank you for giving that time, or giving Petra that time. Can you probably read, can you read her submission? Cool, okay, we're going to read that again. Except to say, in her words, as she listed it out, I believe that the first priority of the harbour cycleway is to make it continuous and company bay to round the harbour towards my harbour. The section missing in the middle creates a dangerous bottleneck. As she says to me, I travel regularly, both down Port of Alaro to Port Chalmers Bay and towards the city from the Cove. A continuous connection from the city to McCandrie Bay, not only a benefit to those that cycle and walk, but it'll be a valuable asset to tourism and recreation, also small businesses at both ends. I support the joining up of the cycleways that are there at present. Thank you, Petra Wink. And to a brief summary of what she sees as a priority.
Okay, do you feel able to answer any questions on her behalf, or do you want to go on?
Yes, I think so, yes, yes.
So any questions, Lee? Councillor Wilson?
Just for clarity, is she a cyclist and walker on that area, or is it one of just concern, potentially as a driver on that road?
She drives mainly, but has had a stint of cycling, and we had an accident one evening, which put her off a wee bit. We do, I'm quite regularly, hop in a car, go to Glen Pellic and walk, lead the cycleway, walkway from there. It's great. We're likely to do that from our own home, but what the hey?
Thank you.
Any other questions for that submission? Okay, far away, Lee, on.
Well, thank you for giving me the time, my name's Lee Morris. Okay, I support the linking up of the existing cycle walkway in the interest of safety for both cars and cyclists. At present, many cars pack up behind one cyclist. They can't pass until the next clear stretch of road. Not always a good choice. You're all very conversed with that bit of road, and as I was mentioning before, it's got a few false corners on it, it's got false, you think it's good, but it's not, it can turn bad quite quickly. Cyclists feel pressured to keep left, a speed up. Cars feel obliged to try and pass at unsafe places. This is a very regular occurrence. Close calls, if I'm at home, I'm home quite regularly in the Cove, and I've got a visual outlook of the curve by boat ship Cove there, and I tell you, it's really entertaining in a sick kind of way. I've seen cars overtake cyclists on a line corner. I've actually witnessed one car giving way, stopping, to let the overtaken car fit in again, coming the other way. Nightmare stuff. As far as entertainment value, which is probably equal to watching cars on the Amalfi Highway in the west coast of Italy at night in the evenings. I've sat there and watched the horrendous things that people do, and it reminds me of that road out there at home. I challenge any councillor to come to my place for a cup of tea at weekend. It doesn't matter what time of the day, if there's cyclists and cars on that stretch of road, you'll watch an accident or a close accident happen. Adding on to the cycleway at the far end of Port of Alaro still does not give certainty of a safe cycleway to the city. With this section between Ochs and Glen Pellic not completed as soon as possible, we will have created two cycleways. Number one, city towards Port Chalmers, and number two, between Glen Pellic and Pass Company Bay. I don't see the sense in it. I want this panel to make the right decision and complete a wonderful and safe public asset that unites the harbour on both ends to our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Questions, councillors? Councillor McTash?
Lee, your house is, it's just down on the road, is it? Is that why you can hear?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I can hear them.
Okay.
You know, my other neighbours as well, they said, you just have to sit 10 minutes and then I'm dead, and you'll watch it, a close one happen. Because people are held up by cars, they want to get past, they think it's clear, and it's not. It's just, it's a great piece of road, that's why people cycle. And as Petra said earlier. Sorry, it sounded a bit come out right. There's more and more people using now weekends. There's the other guy I said before, people are using it in their lunch hams too, eccentric cyclists. So it's getting more used, getting used to, it's getting more, more bikes. So one more bike equals one more his hat.
No further questions?
Thank you, Lee. Thank you much, appreciate your submission.
Sarah Lister. Welcome, Sarah.
I believe that the current entry prices to Moana Pool are far too expensive for tertiary students. The current system of pricing means that only tertiary students who hold a community services card are able to get a discount on the adult price of $6 per swim. And this means that students like me who don't hold a community services card have to pay the full $6. Just because I don't hold a community services card doesn't mean that I have a large disposable income. In 2012, there were just over 400,000 tertiary students in New Zealand. However, only approximately a quarter of these students held a community services card. I think that $6 is far too much money to be paying to go to the pool. Over the past month or so, I've spoken to several students about the current system of pricing, and they've all told me that they are shocked and outraged at the high price. Students generally earn minimum wage, therefore after tax, $6 equates to just over half an hour's pay for a student. The fact that students pay the same amount as working adults doesn't proportionally reflect their incomes. A student who earns minimum wage and only works part-time has to pay the same amount as an adult who earns a significantly higher income. The current system of pricing is not proportionate to the income of tertiary students, and therefore hinders the ability of students to improve their fitness. The pool currently does have a student deal where students can pay $190 and have unlimited access to the pool for nine months. However, this deal doesn't take into account that many students live in Dunedin year-round, and that you would have to go to the pool more than once a week in order to make a saving on this deal. Furthermore, it does not take into account that students who don't look into the deal until later in the year. Therefore, I propose that the council could undertake two options to make the pool more affordable for students. The first is to include students in the concession price of $3.60. This would make sense as a concession should be made for people who don't earn very much as they are undertaking education. The council currently makes a concession for other low-earning groups of people, such as children, the elderly, and those who hold community services cards, i.e. those who are on government benefits. Therefore, it is logical that this fee extend into another group of low-earning people, students. The second option is to create an alternative student package to the one already in place. This option takes into account the fact that the pool is already overcrowded as it is without a large number of students into the mix. Therefore, I advertise a system whereby students who wish to go to the pool regularly are able to get some kind of package where they pay, for example, $36 for 10 entries to the pool. And the entries would not be limited to a certain period as the current system is. This system is unlikely to lose the council any money due to the principle of supply and demand. For example, at $6 per entry, I might only go six times, but if I pay $36, I can go 10 times, and then I will save money and the council won't lose any money. The council could even end up gaining money from this scheme. Introducing a new system of pool pricing that works better in favour of students would benefit both students and the council, and it would ensure that students have better access to fitness facilities in Dunedin. Therefore, I propose that the council changes the pool pricing scheme for tertiary students.
Thank you, Sarah. Councillor McTash?
Thank you, it was a great submission. Two questions. Firstly, I'm trying to get my head around community services card, it's changed since I was at uni, and the price area seemed very vague. Is it the case that if you're getting an allowance, you basically qualify, but if you're not getting allowance, you basically don't?
So that's how it is.
Yeah, okay. Second question, at the moment, we have a bit of capacity issue at Moana Pool. At certain times, at peak times, and it's possible that if we had an avalanche of students because we created this, it may cause more problems. Would you, how receptive do you think the student body would be to a situation where we might be able to create some sort of concession card, but limited to off-peak months? Yeah, okay.
Councillor Kell?
I think probably you're quite right in your suggestion or your guess that a lot of students would qualify for a community services card. I'm struggling a wee bit with the idea that if a student can't be bothered to go through the process of applying for one, students who have more time and less money on the whole, that other rate payers should work an extra hour of their time to pay more rates so that student who can't be asked doesn't go and get a community services card. I mean, I'm just thinking that a lot of students would, so I'm just wondering whether part of the answer to that would be to encourage the Students' Association, get together with them to see if there's any way of streamlining or make it easier for people to get community services cards, so that they can do that more, because there's other benefits all over the place for having that community services card. One of the things from our point of view is cozy homes and other things, you know, some of those sorts of things kick in when you have a community services card. So the more students who have them, if they're eligible, probably the better we all are.
Yeah, it's probably only a small number of people who are in that position, because I know a lot of people who, because they're not on allowance, they can't get a card. So I'm sure there are a lot of people who can't be bothered, and that's why I didn't include it in my speech note, because I decided that probably was the best way to go about arguing my case. But yeah, I think that there are a lot of people out there like me that because of my parents' income, I can't get a card, and for that reason, I can't get a cheaper price to the pool, so yeah.
Councillor Wilson?
You've referenced my homework on the concessions that are already available, as in the memberships that you can get. And oddly, I mean, even for a six-month one, it's, you only have to go more than once every six days, and you're saving on what your current position is. And taking the Les Mills and any gym club, that policy is that you encourage people to make the most benefit by giving and encouraging them to keep on swimming. By the more they use it, the cheaper the swim. You don't think there's some benefit in encouraging people to use things more to get that benefit?
Not completely, but I don't know, like, students are quite busy, I guess.
Are they busier than everyone else? Yeah, I know, it does, I mean, any other fitness centre that you join that generally is encouraged to make the most value out of it by having a quantum, and the more you use it, the cheaper that swim or that gym experience is, but it's not.
Yeah, the reason that I wouldn't go for the $190 plan is, like, because I only just discovered it at this point in the year, and I personally probably would go around once a week, but probably not enough.
Do you realise that there's a $230 six-month membership fee as well, that you can get at any time, or a $400 for 12-month membership? Is that fact added in already? You weren't aware of those?
I don't know, I was aware of the $190 one.
That's the student one specifically, which I don't think is actually covered off in our resources.
Can I suggest that we're getting into discussion here more than a little? Councillor Volz?
Thank you. I think it's shocking that your parents aren't fully supporting you to the age of 25. Are you?
I don't think it's your parents, I'm.
No.
That's because on you.
It is, trust me. You're at the university?
Yeah.
Have you raised this with the Students' Association? Because I noticed it wasn't in their submission.
No.
Is there, and I can't remember if it was you that raised this or if someone else has raised this, to qualify, you have to prove that you're a full-time student and get a letter of confirmation from the, I understand there's some kind of process involved to qualify beyond having a community services card? Is that right?
I think what I understand is that you have to be on this government benefit, so swim allowance.
Sorry, please. And just lastly, once upon a time, there was, through the swimming pool, a two-for-one admission through Moana Pool for students, which doesn't necessarily help you as an individual, but would you? individual, but would you be supportive of, I mean, would that go some way to fix it? Yeah. Thanks. Thanks.
councillor Warren.
Thank you, good submission. Question more for staff than anything else is if we can find out how many students actually take up a membership to go to the swimming pool, and if there's ability to work out how frequently they do go.
Well, I think what I was going to suggest is that we actually get together some information, some that councillor Wilson was referring to, some that councillor Hawkins was referring to, and what you've asked about, and feed it back to some of the submitters, because councillor Hawkins is right, there is another submission, and I think it is from the Students' Association, which refers to only full-time students being able to get any concession at all, and they're seeking it for all students. So we won't be able to get to the bottom of that now, but I think we can collate that with our staff, or ourselves, to collate that information and feed it back to all the submitters. I think that would be sort of the way I'd be looking at it. If there's no more questions. Sarah, thank you for your submission, it was a good one.
Mr Allen, Paul Allen, South Dunedin Boys.
And Nicole Bellis, sir, to an extent.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, ladies and councillors. Look, I'm not going to be too long. Basically, you've got our submission in front of you, talking about a big vote of thanks again to the council for supporting the South Dunedin Street Festival last year, and it was a bigger success than the inaugural one, and we do say thank you to the city council for supporting that through the community's funding, and also for the physical presence for those people who did attend on the day, so thank you very much for that. And also for the Community Expo, which was held at St Patrick's Community Centre in South Dunedin as well. We will be running both of those, or intending to run both of those events this year, again, Community Expo in August and District Festival on the 8th of November. So, and we do have applications for unit funding for the District Festival. With that in mind, and I do notice that the website, the city council, is lacking some photos for South Dunedin, which are recent, in regards to festivals on the South Dunedin page. I've got loads if you want them.
Sell them.
Yes, you must welcome to buy them from me if you'd like to, but no, seriously, if there are photos that you would like to update, please do contact me. The main part of the submission that we want to again reinforce is around the South Dunedin community facility and library. And I think it's been really positive to know that it is back on, it continues to be on the agenda, it's been raised again, and it has been certainly been discussed for proceeding. We do want to encourage the next steps to happen, so the interim, an interim facility to be set up as perhaps a sign of good faith to the community of South Dunedin that this is actually in process. Certainly making sure that it's, that people do know that it is a interim facility, not the actual final facility. As per our submission, there are lots of benefits which we feel would be for the local community, both from education, community, community development, and supporting, supporting the young people and elderly people in our community with a place to meet. So that's probably the main aspect of the submission we're wanting to. I like, there were, there was another section, psychoactive substances, but that's been addressed by national government, so that's... One of the other, two of the other issues, one which we certainly have had lots of discussion about, cycleways. We acknowledge progress of cycleways, but what we'd ask is continue to look at not just development, but making sure that they're actually safe for cyclists as well, they're in places that cyclists actually do want to travel, and paths that they do want to travel. Personally, a concern which I've had with the shore streets development, the number of times I've seen rocks over the newly developed path, even with the new fences up, is a concern. Yeah, I think there needs to be a whole lot more work done to stabilise that cliff face to make sure it's safe for cyclists and walkers along that path. So safety, safety is the biggest concern with cycling through South Dunedin in the parts that are being developed. And the other issue is around the rising water levels, the water table in South Dunedin, it is an area of concern for residents, for property values, for property owners, and for all of the aspects of health issues related to damp homes if the water table is rising. And we wanted to find out sort of what is being investigated, what solutions are being looked at, and what consultation is out there in the community, and what observational stuff is actually happening out there in the community as well. So that's, thank you.
Questions? councillor McTanish.
I've just got one before, thank you, here's a machine that's pertaining to cycleways. We've just had a submission from a spokesperson articulating concerns about infrastructure in South Dunedin as well. The decision that was made by the DCC to invest in the type of infrastructure that's going in was twofold, was on the back of budget constraints, and also recognising the need for a network that connected the schools. And I guess the third thing was, a few of the consultants who was doing the work there, and given that this was effectively first stage of the cycle infrastructure rollout in Dunedin, there would have been an appetite to remove parking along main routes. Spoke's submission very clearly at the time was that the preference for cyclists was separated infrastructure on the main routes. What is your, in terms of the submission saying, where cyclists want to go? What appetite do you think there is in South Dunedin for that parking on main routes versus cycling trade-off, which is inherently a conflict in that limited space area?
I think, again, I can't speak because we haven't really communicated too much with, or investigated with cyclists within the area, but what we're sort of asking is that there'd be ongoing conversation with the community about the development, so if there is a new path that's being looked at, then making sure that the parties, both from a commercial point of view, as well as from the cyclist's point of view, as well, is being consulted, and there is some form of consensus around the development of them. It's a sort of non-answer, but it's sort of saying, keep the conversation open, and it's not just a matter of saying, well, this is the path for a cyclist to go, if that's going to be completely inconvenient. One, the cyclist, because it's travelling down the wrong road, then that's a big issue, but if it's going to be affecting retail on a major way, then that's also going to be a problem as well. So I recognise that it's never going to be a perfect solution, but it's a matter of coming to a good, engaging with the community and saying, well, what is a workable solution?
I think I can generally comment on behalf of the business association, who were pleased with the design of the cycleway that took it out of the main street area where there is an existing parking issue, which the South Dunedin Business Association has submitted on. Looking towards, yeah, future solutions, we're probably reasonably close to peak parking under its current regime there, so any move to share that corridor with parking would probably mean a lot of reluctance from the retail community.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Just regarding the proposed South Dunedin library slash community complex, and I was interested to note you saying that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you want it to be clear that it is an interim measure.
Okay.
And I just wondered, if it works, this interim measure, why we would then go through the whole process of shifting it again? I mean, I know that there is long-term, eight million dollars in the long-term plan for a new build, which may or may not be an abstract concept in reality. But if we can, if it does work, if the triangle's ahead and it does work, do you have any objection to it staying as where it is?
I would imagine that an interim, an interim facility would be of a smaller working model rather than a full-finished complex, whereas I think the thought of the community facility would have a lot more, perhaps amenities for the community, not just as a library facility, but actually as a meeting place, so it could be, there's a few aspects of that, and I think by utilising perhaps empty shop facilities or empty spaces which are currently out there as an interim process, while a permanent facility is being designed, built, consulted on, is a...
Could the permanent facility not also be in one of those empty spaces? I mean...
Oh, look, if we can, if a permanent facility could be set up from the onset, and it is, it's big enough, viable enough, it's got all the facilities that perhaps the community is looking at, then why would you not just go to a permanent facility? But it's, but in the meantime, you've got to look at how long is that going to take to develop, or do the renovations to get it up to that stage, whereas perhaps an interim facility might not be, it might not be up to the same quality standard as what a final facility would be, but it's a step along the way.
Right. I guess the question is, would you rather the money be spent on the contents of the complex or the build of the complex?
It's a good question, which needs to be looked into further.
Cool. Thanks, Paul.
No further questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tanga Art Society, Ginny Longstaff. Welcome, Ginny.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here, appreciate the time and effort. Wish I'd brought some chips and pizzas for you. Obviously, I'm here to represent the Arts Society, you'll have seen my submission. I don't have anything further to table to you, but I do have some further comments to add to it. The last paragraph in my submission is the one that I want to start with first, and that's the one in which I thank the Dunedin City Council for their current financial support. We're established down at the Dunedin Railway Station. Our galleries down there, I feel, are quite focal to the creative community in Dunedin, and I hope you see that your current financial support is money well spent. It certainly keeps the profile of Dunedin arts community up there, and it shows that the DCC by its subsidising of our rates, rent, be supportive of the arts and local practitioners. Also, the fact that we're in the Dunedin Railway Station, we're a major focus for the tourist industry, and it's not just an arts experience that we provide. We are the first point of call very often for tourist information, and often first aid. People fall off or need help. That's a bit mine, it's all about the arts we're here, not whether we've got first aid certificates. I'll give you just a bit of personal background here to show that I'm totally committed to my presence in Dunedin and my involvement in the arts community, and why I'm putting myself through this process, because it's not coming naturally to me to be a front person. I've been a Dunedin resident and rate payer for 30 years, except two years away during 2008, 2010. When I returned, I decided to commit myself to art, heritage and tourism, to sing the praises of Dunedin as a wonderful place to live or to visit. So I became active as a practising artist and an Atago Arts Society member. Last year, I was appointed president. I don't have a lot of experience in admin or bureaucracy or form filling, but I do have the passion to keep Dunedin's flag flying as a vibrant, creative community. This is a little optional extra, but I also gained employment at Olverston Historic Home, and since Jeremy Smith became manager there, I have worked at fostering closer ties between his place and my place, engaging the public in appreciating creativity and heritage. There was always a close relationship between the Thiemann family at Olverston and the Atago Arts Society. In fact, David Thiemann was president 90 years ago, and now I am in that role. So I know Jeremy gave a little blah blah, he got off the mark early and got you while you were fresh. So I'm just supporting his submission as well, because I see that the heritage and the arts connection is really closely linked, and the fact that the Dunedin Arts Society is in the railway station, I think that is really key to our visibility and viability. The three keys that I most enjoy on my keyring are to my home, my heart and my art. One, the key to my house in North East Valley. It's a good example of a resilient community that hopefully Dunedin as a whole can become. Two, the key to Olverston Historic Home, my uplifting place of employment and aesthetic pleasure. Two, no, that's three. Key to the Dunedin Railway Station, it's an iconic heritage building and place of my community volunteer effort at the Atago Arts Society. In my submission, I touch on the fact, well, it's actually quite a major fact, that not only do we support a huge membership in the arts community, we've got 600 members, and it's quite interesting that the split is pretty much 50/50 between arts practitioners and just people who are just engaged in enjoying the arts, who want to be non-artists members. But our visibility down at the railway station and the fact that other events occur down there, the fact that we are in those gallery rooms, looking after those gallery rooms, keeping everything nicely presented, it does mean that people, other organisations such as ID Fashion Week, they rent our facilities, it does mean that the Heart Foundation can have a fundraising auction there, science festival exhibitions can be held there, the Centenary of the Dunedin Photographic Society, they held an exhibition there, Art Centre, the Embroideries, all these different community groups with a creative outlet, they come to us to rent our space. The community gallery offers something, it doesn't have as good facilities as us, obviously, the calendar is stuffful. It's really key, I'll just reiterate how we do appreciate your support, and we hope that we'll be ongoing. Just recently, we had a door counter put in the gallery. At the moment, we've got the Hope &amp; Sun's Art Awards on, our premier biennial exhibition. Since four days ago, there have been 2,100 people come through the Arts Society stores. Good promotion being in the newspaper, and it is our key exhibition. But cruise ship season, we are so much more busier than that, and we didn't have a door counter on. We have three part-time staff employed, and their roles are just getting busier and busier. The rest of us are volunteers. If our wages have to go up because our staff get more and more gainfully busy, yeah, our outgaying's quite huge, we've kept our membership quite low. So we do urge you to keep supporting us. At the last mayoral forum, I spoke, and Mayor Cull said that we could have one or the other, oh, this and that, sorry, backtrack. Dunedin City Council used to sponsor the City of Dunedin Art Awards, it was a biennial art awards, it was another key focus to our exhibition programme. That got scrapped last year, the funding for that. If we are in any danger of having our other SLA, whatever, changed, adjusted, and I perfectly accept as a Dunedin rate payer and citizen, we're open to all these possibilities, can we have one or the other? That's what Mayor Cull said to me, we can't have both, but we can have one or the other. If we get scrapped as being supported in the rent and the rates, please can we have the exhibition back? I'd just like to put in a little plug for that. Also, because we're in the Anzac Avenue premises, we're presently in talks with other arts-related businesses in Anzac Avenue. The World War One commemoration things are going to be huge, so we'd hate to be kicked out and not be part of the Anzac Avenue thing. We're in talks with the Atago Museum, we used to have premises in that little North Dunedin post office building there on the corner. Uh, we used to have premises in that little North Dunedin Post Office building there on the corner. It's now the H D Skinner Annex. And sometimes, uh, definitely, for instance, next year, Anzac Day, we're, we've got a public hire. So our Arts Society members won't be able to exhibit in our own premises. So that little cultivating network with the Atago Museum, we might be able to have a exhibition back in the H D Skinner wing. Um, it all gets down to the fact, is art a luxury or a necessity? I think, Dunedin, we need to consider that the arts are a necessity. They add so much to the fabric of our society, our community as a whole. Um, and we're really, really, really looking forward to seeing this arts and culture strategy. I know, um, it comes down to resources. Uh, and that's what it comes down to the Arts Society as well, with our minimum of paid employment and the rest of it all being volunteer run. Um, yeah, so we're a society that's been going for a hundred and thirty-eight years. We've got reliability behind us. We've got passion in front of us. And it's not about same old, same old. It's about being relevant, visible and supportively engaged in the Dunedin community. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Can I just clarify? You don't, you're not under any impression, or you haven't been given any indication, that your tenure at the railway station is at risk, or have you?
I know we're safe this year, but everything's at risk in Dunedin.
No, but you haven't had any...
No, nothing formal, nothing at all. Hearsay out in the community. If something feels too good to be true, it usually is.
Well, can I assure you that there's been no hearsay here?
Um, thank you for that.
Um, questions, councillor Cowan.
I know this is perhaps a tad mean, but do you remember if we didn't invest in fossil fuels and then had less money and then couldn't give you so much? Would that be a fair trade-off?
Well, everyone has to cut their costs to suit, suit what's happening. And if we're all dedicated members of the Dunedin community, obviously adjustments are needed. I, I personally support that viewpoint.
Does the Arts Society, was what I was asking you, support the idea of they'd be happy to have less money if we invested in something that gave us less income?
I haven't put that to any council meeting, but maybe I should.
Any further questions?
But can I just follow that up? Councillor Benson. But we are clear that the comment in your submission is a comment about fossil, about ethical investment is a comment about policy, the view of the Arts Society. It's not personal.
What, you're talking about the fossil fuel?
Yeah.
That's totally my personal opinion, because I have not put it to the council and had any feedback from them.
Any of those ethical investment questions been put to the Arts Society?
No.
Any further questions? Thank you, Jenny.
Sorry, can I... Oh, it's not a question, but it's, um, just in lieu of that comment. I think people should be aware of the comment from staff under corporate policy, that your comments regarding the confusing nature of the online submission form will be noted and considered in the development of next year's form. And I think you've made a comment somewhere, just can't find it now, but you ended up...
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I ended up putting two in because I hit some button and it went off before I'd actually written my submission. And I thought, was that it? You know, and then I had another go at it. So, so, yeah. And the other thing, other comment I'd just like to say before I leave is, how do you guys get your head around talking about bicycles and plants and this and that? Would it be perhaps a suggestion to have an arts group and a bicycle group and, you know, so you can all talk about the same thing on the same evening? Anyway, that's just a comment. I admire you for your flexibility.
Speaking of multitask, well, I, I think you'll find that the order of submitters is to suit the convenience of the submitters, because some people can't come through the day.
Appreciate that. And I've benefited from that myself, so thank you.
That's probably why.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jenny. Um, Bridget Irvin. Welcome, Bridget. The next five minutes are yours to monopolize or whatever you like.
Thank you. Just like to follow room tonight, used to.
And you just pulled the mic right in front of you, Bridget.
Sure. And so thank you for the opportunity to speak, uh, speak this evening. Um, I must confess, I was prompted to put a submission in after a speech from Dr Bidrose at a Dunedin Young Professionals event. She commented that there was, um, certainly a plateau in terms of about my demographic and participating in the council's process. So here I am, doing my bit to smooth that out for you. I think on top of the submission that I've put in writing, I just have a couple of points that I want to emphasize, and I'll deal with those relatively quickly. For my own, I'm, am pleased with the approach that the council have taken, um, through this year's annual plan. And it's my view that the council needs to continue to consolidate where money is going within the society. I think the council needs to continue to focus on its four functions. Um, and there is a real risk that, uh, we, I suppose, exacerbate the debt problem that we have um, by trying to, uh, spread ourselves too thinly. At this stage, I don't think that the city is in a position to undertake too many more projects, such as new pools and libraries. And that at this point, we need to make do with what we have and perhaps focus on looking to grow the city more effectively in a way where the city can sustain those kinds of amenities more effectively. That leads me to my next point, um, and one that perhaps sits a little bit outside, um, the submission process strictly. And that's about my view of the council needing to become a facilitator of development and progress within the city and not a handbrake. To be an organization that's easy to deal with, open to new ideas that the community developers and businesses might come to you with. And I think there's certainly been improvements in that, um, in recent years, but I still think that there is quite a long way to go. Programs such as that to support the adaptive reuse of historic buildings are good, but only take us so far. Building owners will only be inclined to spend money if there are people available and businesses available for tenants then. And I think if we can provide those opportunities, then it won't be necessary to subsidize the development, redevelopment of those buildings. So I urge you to focus your attention and bear those things in mind as you're making the decisions that you have to make in relation to the annual plan. So I think I'll perhaps leave it there. Is any questions?
Thank you. Questions, councillor Staines.
Just in terms of the city being an, an, an enabler rather than, you know, something difficult to deal with. The comment you've made, do you have any specific areas that you believe we are not? Because there's been a lot of work in the last twelve year, twelve months, for sure, in trying to change the way we handle, uh, applications to us to enable things to happen. So do you have any specifics? Because that might be helpful to us to understand that we're not doing well.
Um, I don't think I'd like to talk about specific projects. Um, but I think, and it's perhaps a, a culture change within staff. Um, and from my perspective, for those of you who don't know, I'm a lawyer. I do predominantly resource management work, and so we do a lot of work with council staff um, in trying to, um, come up with solutions. And, and that's what we will often do. We, we feel that we put a path through um, that doesn't compromise the city in terms of your own obligations. Um, but I suppose staff are in a position where, um, to a certain extent, their skin they have in the game is to, to their own reputation. And so, um, the, the motivations are different. And I think, um, there perhaps needs to be a bit more of a top-down kind of, um, approach to try and facilitate staff feeling that they are in a position to actually be more decisive, to, um, be more proactive and to, um, I suppose, allow a slightly more flexible approach to some of the things that people come to them with.
So what you're advocating is getting staff more ability and more confidence to make, uh, the right decisions where statute, where it doesn't cross the statutory boundary?
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkes.
Thank you. Um, and you said you don't want to talk about specific examples, which is unfortunate. Um...
If you have a specific one you'd like to ask about, I can...
No, no, no. It was, well, it was just relating, following on from councillor Staines. When you refer to, um, council as a handbrake, um, that's a fairly assertive claim. And I just wonder if that is based on your personal experience? You have encountered council as being a handbrake on your professional work?
Um, well, perhaps not my professional work, but the work of my clients, perhaps more accurately. Um, I mean, we have one example at the moment where we are in a position of trying to negotiate agreement with, um, the council in respect of, um, a developer. Um, on Friday, we had agreement in principle. And, um, the, for reasons best on to, um, the council staff, we're now still waiting, um, for confirmation through council's lawyers that we can go ahead. And the matter's time critical. There are options available if the agreement in principle doesn't work out for that issue to be mopped up through an alternative mechanism. So if this doesn't work out, the council doesn't miss out. Um, and for the life of me, I, I can't see why we just can't get on with it. Um, and each day that the decision is put off, um, comes at significant cost and potential risk to our client. Um, and we just can't seem to get the people we need or the person we need to just say, yes, that's fine, crack on with it.
What do you mean the council misses out, misses out on?
Well, it's, it's to do with...
The client misses out?
Pardon?
The client misses out, not the council. Misses out on...
We're talking about, um, some development contributions. And the council can levy those either at two-two-four C on a subdivision, but also has a number of other opportunities within which they can levy those. Um, and so if, for whatever reason, the agreement which we are comfortable with and, and thought we had worked out falls over, then the development contributions can still be levied at another stage. So the council would recover that. And so we can't understand why we're still waiting for the agreement to let us progress.
Can I just ask how many, full back figure, how many of your clients' consent applications get denied?
Um, I don't know that off the top of my head. This, this isn't a question about resource consents. Um, I think generally speaking, I mean, the resource consent's its own process. Um, and I wouldn't...
So what are the other hand, what, what else makes up this handbrake if it's not the consent process? But you've acknowledged it isn't a council process.
Um, I think it's perhaps what can be done outside of the statutory processes to help facilitate, um, businesses' development and even community groups from achieving what they would like to achieve. Um, I had another experience, similar experience, um, in my position as a trustee of the Dunedin Tunnels Trust. And we spent many, many hours, and I think councillor Wilson will be able to attest to this, discussing various, various issues related to opening, um, in particular, the Cavisham Tunnel. And, um, the risk adversity of, uh, council staff in relation to issues that from our perspective seemed infinitely solvable, um, has meant that really nothing has happened in respect of that particular project. And, and that's the kind of issue that I'm, I'm talking about in response to councillor Staines's questions. I think there needs to be a, um, a change in the mentality, I suppose, to try and work with people to solve problems rather than simply just saying, well, there's one.
So a steady-as-she-does-council approach with a less risk-averse staff?
I don't necessarily think less risk-averse staff, but staff who are, um, more, um, adaptable, more, I suppose, confident in certain of the solutions to problems that, that arise. And I'm not saying that you should just carry on and just develop whatever or do whatever and have no regard for anything.
Good.
But, you know, where there are problems that are identified, you want to be facilitating ways of overcoming those.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
You, you don't think that for every lawyer who's attempting to facilitate their client's path through a process, there's another lawyer gleefully rubbing their hands at the possibility that a shortcut might be taken?
No, I don't think so, Richard. I don't think we would advocate that you do things that were illegal.
Wasn't suggesting for one moment that you would.
Councillor Wilson.
Hello.
Councillor McTavish.
Well, my only question was, are we relieved now you're still in the minority, um, in terms of young people submitting? And have you got any thoughts about what we can do to appeal more to your slash my demographic in terms of, um, getting them involved in processes like this? Um... You can sit on that and get back. Yeah.
I'm not, I suppose, you know, a lot of the issues that come up through these processes, like, um, libraries are a good example, swimming pools and things like that, they perhaps don't impact on our day-to-day lives in the same way as they would for other people. And so I think, um, the epithets perhaps are just due to the general lack of, I suppose, um, participation or, or understanding or, or need for a lot of the things that the council provides. Um, so I suspect that there will be plenty of arts available that as they progress through their lives will contribute more. Um, yeah. I suppose, look at the things that we participate in and then threaten not to fund them.
Perversely novel. Councillor Cowan.
Uh, thank you for coming. Um, one of the things that people have mentioned to me recently that they imagine might help is not only having a general idea of a red carpet approach to a big person who comes to town or something as a potential employer and things, but to change our structure slightly to have something that some older people seem to think we had in the past, which was a sort of a chief planner role. And it's not that we don't have planners and, and there's doubtless somebody who is sort of effectively the chief planner, but the role of somebody who we used to have, who was actually in charge of things. So when things got bogged down a bit or something, they were a senior enough person to say, this is getting bogged down, let's get into it and get, get it sorted. Do you see that as being a useful sort of role to return to having?
Um... Yeah, I suppose you're talking, sort of talking like a facilitator type role, perhaps. I don't necessarily think that there isn't that available now. Um, I think in terms of planning, um, if you face a particular issue like Sir Valen Worthington or John Soul are, um, available to you. Um, I suppose it's, it's actually the, I suppose, their frame of mind, I think, which we find more challenging than necessarily having access to the right people. Um, and that's again around that idea of, of hunting for solutions rather than simply identifying problems.
Well, some of our staff get caught between a rock and a hard place because we hassle them because they come up with their own solutions.
Yes.
And then, and then people get cross because they say, what is your staff doing saying yes or no to that? And then we start intervening again. So they're sort of caught either way. If they have just, some days we don't want them to have discretion and some days we do. Just having a senior person who had the experience that you could let have a discretion rather than the people at the further downs who might...
Yeah, I suppose, um, certainly none of those discussions in relation to resource management consents, whatever. You, you couldn't expect that person to be able to say, well, yes, you can just do that. Um, there is always going to be the process that needs to be gone through. Um, but it's perhaps having a, a more supportive, um, approach to finding ways of answering the questions that, that will inevitably come up when you get into that regulatory environment where, um, you know, what the councillors might take to start... what the councillors might take to start is actually as relevant as what we might have spoken about with them prior to actually getting into the hearing room. So, yeah, I, I think it's just being able to have more upfront, more useful discussions with the council upfront, that would be of most benefit.
Councillor Thompson?
When, when you have, you described the situation like you're expecting a decision on Friday, but you haven't heard. Is, would it, would it be standard practice to be contacted and have an explanation? Or is that not standard practice? And what difference would that make?
Well, I've been following up every day.
Right.
Um, I'm not, yeah, I mean-
I suppose my question is more, are you aware of what the problem might be? Or is, because if you're unaware, I imagine the frustration then becomes quite high.
Yes, yeah. It's a bit of both at the moment. And certainly if, if we didn't know, then, then there would be a higher level of frustration than there already is. And I think, yeah, communication is very important in those kinds of circumstances. Because at least if, if we understand what the problem is that the council's trying to solve, then we can look to try and feed into that in a way to help resolve that more quickly. And you'd hope that the more minds get on to it, the better.
No further questions. Can I just conclude by suggesting that if in this particular process you feel that the way you've been treated is unreasonable, then send the details to myself or the chief executive and it will be fed down that day?
Okay, thank you.
Um, Neil Valentine? Welcome, Neil.
Thank you, Michael and councillors for having me here today. Um, has everyone got documents in front of us?
Yes, we've, we've-
And so-
Andrew, yes, we've got your submission and everyone treated as read?
Sweet, fantastic.
And speak to it, so you can add that in.
That's great. So I work for the Ataga University Students Association and I'm there full-time as their queer support coordinator. And so as you would have read the draft and any strategy that you had before you, we use queer as an inclusive term of all forms of sexuality, sex and gender identity. So it includes lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual, so on and so forth. And it's a reclaimed word, just highlighting that for any people with historical angst with the use of the word queer. And so within my role, I guess I see some of the best and worst that our city has to offer in regards to how we treat our people. I see people who come out to their parents and get kicked out of home. Today, I was at a local high school and I was told by the Galloway Councilor that one of the pupils was recently outed on Facebook and got beaten up the next day at school. Um, I hear constantly of people being discriminated against in a whole range of areas across our city. And so my work within my current role and within conversations I've had across our city with people from the DHB and from a range of community organisations, that we decided it'd be a good idea to put together a HUI. And hence last year we had inaugural Dunedin Diversity HUI. We put together 50 people who work in the community and who work with queer people to have a conversation about Ways Forward. And that's where of course this strategy came out of. And thank you, Michael, for coming along and, and wrapping up that HUI for us. It was, it was great. And so, yes, this draft strategy, which you should have, sort of sets out, I guess, the content that we received from that HUI. So it was essentially that HUI was a form of consultation and all those ideas we have now fed into this draft strategy document. Um, and you'll see that it's framed around sort of key areas of work that we need to do in order to make our city as queer-friendly as possible. And I think that's something we really should be aspiring for. We should be having a city where we do aspire to have a celebration of diversity. And yet when I read the, the draft, the wellbeing strategy that we have, I didn't see the word queer or LGBT or lesbian, gay, bisexual or sexuality, sex or gender identity anywhere within it. And perhaps that's our fault as a community for not getting involved in that process. But it's also what has prompted as well this document. And so hopefully this document is something that the council can see as a strategy that could be adopted in some way within, within the council. I see it sort of like perhaps the young people's strategy, which is seen as, I guess, sort of a sub-strategy within the wellbeing strategy. And it might work to complement those other strategies which are out there. And so I think one of the neat things that we've come up with is a charter for the city. It's a draft charter still at this stage, which is your very last page of the strategy. And I think this would be awesome to have as a city, a very simple charter that the council perhaps initially can commit to. And then other organisations throughout the city like, like, for example, the university or the polytech or the hospital or major businesses like Cabri could commit to. It's got very, six very simple points, which, yeah, we've got as the draft sort of provisions for that. And that would then allow for further training to go on and education. Because I think when people are educated about people's identities, when people hear people's stories, that's when a lot of that, that negative stuff that happens just gets eliminated. And so that's what we're hoping to happen. Um, we're putting together a working group, again, from the HUI, of people who are committed to this process. And at the moment that involves people from the likes of Ataga Youth Wellness, PFLAG, Cads, South Trans and Z, Student Health, Family Planning, Community College, DCC already, Purple Passions and PAT. And as such, we've also applied for some funding through the Civics Grant. And now really the application was just to start a conversation. It was a fairly arbitrary amount that we put in there because we really want to start a conversation with council and perhaps other funders around how we can find someone, find some funding to employ someone to help us do this work. So my job at, is university-based, but I'm constantly getting requests from outside of university to do my work. So I'm constantly having requests from the likes of high schools and lots of community organisations to go in and do trainings with them, to do professional development for their staff as well as provide partial care and access to service and that kind of thing. And so easily my job is becoming more than full-time. And again, that would be well-supported by the likes of a city-wide queer support coordinator. And so again, that application for that Civics Grant was to start that conversation to see if that's something that could be within our current staff here at council. Or if, whether it's not, this would be a better place to have our working group form some sort of trust and then gain funding from various places and become an employer or wherever there's another existing organisation out there in the community that could employ someone in this role and that we could find funding from various avenues. And so again, yeah, so that's to start that conversation. And I do have two letters of support currently as well. But obviously we had support overall because of the diversity HUI, those 50 people that are represented there. That was direct consultation feedback from there. So I'll leave it there because I think you probably have quite a few questions, so.
Well, I'll kick off questions. I'm interested in how you see the charter working. And you mentioned linking up or getting buy-in from institutions like the university or polytechnic or all their businesses. You'll be aware of the model that we have for economic development strategy where from day one it was developed by and bought into by a range of state funds.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, are you, so which, which are you, how do you see this going? I mean, do you see council needing to lead this or do you see this as more city-wide from the beginning?
I think it should be a yes-and model. I think council and community should always work in partnership on these kinds of things. And I see DCC having an incredible role as showing leadership to the rest of the community on this. For council to commit to this and say that we are going to correct and help correct, you know, New Zealand's most queer-friendly city, for example, perhaps from an economic point of view, you know, chase the pink dollar. Then obviously other organisations would then be much more likely to leap on board. So it's, it's got to be a yes-and, I believe.
Questions. Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, O'Neil, and thanks for your work on the HUI last year and thanks for turning it into something. It's great when something like that doesn't turn into a talk fest and it's great to see that, that work crystallised in the submission, which is very thorough and ambitious. And I thank you for that and I expected nothing less. Um, you said that the 75K figure is essentially arbitrary. Realistically though, if, if we were to, and whether the money comes from us and the university, you know, USA or DHB or wherever, what kind of figure can we realistically be expecting someone to work full-time on this for us?
Hmm. So I mean, I just sort of went into my head, I thought, professional person on, say, around 50K a year plus 25 expenses to create resources, to have some travel funding, to, you know, do that liaising work and that kind of thing, office expenses, that kind of stuff. For me, that's just kind of quickly dialled up to 75K, which is where that fun, that, that number come from.
Are there national examples that we can draw from in terms of either funding or operational models?
Unfortunately not. So bigger cities have different models. The likes of the supercity in Auckland have someone within council staff who's tasked as one of their portfolios is to work on this. But then they have other massive organisations like Rainbow Youth employing multiple staff as an actual, you know, community organisation to go and do this work. So in Dunedin, obviously all we have is me, so it's sort of a bit stretched.
Um, what would, I'm finding it hard because this seems very, in your own mind, fully formed as a strategy in and of itself. And it would be a shame to then go back to the beginning of, of this work.
Hmm.
So regardless of what the governance model or the operational model looks like, what, what are the first things, like what do you see as the primary, the first goal of this work?
Yeah, so we didn't want to probably put those goals into hierarchy. We believe that was the work of the working group once we formed that and that's going to be formed at the end of this month. And that's what we believe will be the first task will be to finalise the strategy. So it goes from draft to actual. And we've got some money already raised to make it pretty, so that's cool. And then as you'll see, there's a whole bunch of goals. Um, must be up to 2025 in there as a sort of overarching goals. And each of them has been broken down with a, a box from like time frame. And so that's, we believe, is the task of the working group, not for us. Just as the organisers of the HUI essentially to develop.
And has that working group been assembled?
Uh, yeah, it's currently assembled. So we've got the list of people who have committed to it. But we have yet to actually have a meeting. All very busy people, but all committed to the process still.
Great, thank you.
Councillor McTavish?
Neil, I've got a question. You, I mean, for clear and obvious reasons, the, the way that you have gone about doing this is specifically for the LGBT queer community. In terms of diversity more generally, there's obviously a piece of work there for, for a whole range of groups that for whatever reason feel like a minority in our community or feel definitely not welcome in our community. And from the, from a governance perspective on this, in, in looking at our social wellbeing strategy and our current ridiculous financial constraints, it would probably feel more possible to fund something that was, that had a broader scope, that, that looked at diversity through a broader lens. Now, I appreciate that that's not what this proposal is and that's in our way, me to be undermining the quality of this work or the need for this. But I just wondered maybe you considered whether you feel that there would be any room to expand the concept of diversity charter to something that was serving a broader community or, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. So obviously definitely our perspective is from a coming from a queer perspective and, and seeing that as our specific issue. Obviously there are other issues out there. To some extent, that's already been covered by councils. So say youth work, for example, it's already been covered quite well. I believe various cultural groups have good relationships with council already and work quite closely with council on a whole range of processes. And so, yeah, so our focus is definitely this, which we don't believe council's really covering at all. We think it's quite a new area essentially for council. Still a very significant group. Statistics would show us at around 10% of general population. So, you know, that's very significant. So obviously there's a good argument there for some funding specifically for queer community. But I do recognise the funding constraints, obviously, that are out there as well. Um, but yeah, I think there's, there's a definite business gap for what we have to do. And of course, you know, this is important stuff. This is, this is people's lives are being directly affected by. Use statistics show us that there's between four and five times higher suicide, suicideality rate in queer and young people as opposed to straight young people. So I had to put it this way, as like a fright thing, but people's lives are literally on the line when it comes to this. At the moment, our support services for queer young people in Dunedin are deficient.
In that context, have you had discussions with Public Health South?
Yes. So one of our letters of support is from Public Health South, Southern District Health, sorry, yep. And so we're working closely with Alex Massey there. His tat, ha, hat title is Sexual Health Advisor, so it's not, yeah, it's not queer specific, but they're definitely on board. And you can, I don't know, do I table this letter or?
Do you, do you, do you?
Yeah.
Or another form?
And I guess, does his enthusiasm extend to funding or potential funding or?
Again, I think if the DCC tops some leadership role on this, then the DHB would get on board and say, yes, let's see how we can work together on it.
Thank you.
Councillor Cowan?
Aston Answer, thanks.
So, oh, thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Neil. Welcome, Murray.
Thank you. I have three submissions tonight. Perhaps you just clarify which one you have in front of you first. Make sure we talk about the right one, start.
A unitary council fund for the city of France?
Sorry? Unit three, unit three councils?
Yes. Unitary council research contributions?
We'll start with unit three councils then. I don't have any new information, but I'd like to just verbally speak to that, that topic. I submitted that the DCC allocate funds to further the investigations of creating one unified council encompassing ORC and DCC. My prime drivers for this idea are integrating a practical working relationship with the DCC and the regional services. It's an opportunity for better communications between organisations and the community. The Ataga Regional Division would be able to leverage off a superior DCC service delivery. Some of these ideas come from my own experiences that I've had with Ataga Regional Council and the city council as well. I think it would remove poor front office services from the ORC and enable better care of ratepayers and customers. It would remove future narrow and inconsistent thinking around how to charge rates for Leith and Limsey Creek flood schemes. Once again, personal experiences, inconsistency and not pre-logical in the way that they have charged ratepayers in those regions. For example, if you drive past my property in Woodhorse Street, should you pay some rates for having the privilege of driving through an area where there's an opportunity to have a flood? I think you would drive past, but you wouldn't think about the fact that I'm paying higher rates to make sure that that area is flood-free. I think it would remove the confusion around who is responsible for what parts of Atago and stop both organisations passing the buck to each other when in the end someone has to be responsible. Situations have arisen where you go to one, one council and they say, no, we'll have a look at that. You don't hear back and, and you find it's gone to another council and you end up with, it's not my responsibility, et cetera, et cetera. Um, costing, definitely an opportunity to reduce overheads and governance costs due to the joint use of shared services in one organisation only. Total costs of the ORC would be in the region of 650,000 for audit, 321, director's fees 294. I mean, there would have to be some savings in, in governance costs. Rationalisation of building use. For me, the end game would be minimising ratepayer costs. More transparency around ORC activities and bring them to line with the DCC better frontline customer service, which I've already mentioned. The city council has much better online tools and I think the ORC could leverage off that and produce much better services. Most of all, removing the silo mentality and waste in our smaller Atago population. We can't afford- We can't afford the duplication of services in a region of our size with such a small population. It was noted in the ODT on Saturday the third of May, an interview with Grant McKenzie, that the new group role for DCC owned companies had suffered from a silo based approach to financial management. Hopefully you've all read the newspaper. DCC and ORC, they need to be strategically grouped. No doubt Mr McKenzie could add value to the insurance cost for the ORC infrastructure while negotiating on behalf of the DCC at Lloyd's London. Porta Atago and Chalmers Property, two significant businesses that could benefit closer collaboration with other DCC owned companies. For example, other unitary councils in New Zealand are all in super, super council. Formed by the merging of the Auckland Regional Council with other city and district councils, you know about that story. Gisborne, covering most of the East Cape, Nelson, Tasman and Marlborough. Those councils have merged. So I believe this is an opportunity worth serious consideration to show Atago as progressive. My recommendation is the budget for the feasibility work promote unitary council. There are just too many good reasons why unitary council would be best for our region. And I guess we're a very small regional population with a very, very large geographic area. I think we are, we are stronger if we are not divided, but we, we don't work in silos. I really believe that this council should put some funding aside to look at that, that option.
Thank you. I'll kick off the questions. Have, what's, were Dunedin, the Dunedin area to be a unitary council? What would you envisage would happen to the areas currently under the jurisdiction of the regional council, including the central Atago district, Queenstown Lakes and Waitaki?
Yep. Quite frankly, I think it needs a lot of strategic thought and process around how you actually make that whole operation work. I don't have the detail. I couldn't give you the answer to that. But I, I guess it's one of those, it's one of those projects that you need to put some costs aside to work out.
What I'm getting at is do you envisage Dunedin being the regional council for all that area?
Yes, I would.
Or do you envisage the regional council, in a sense, retrenching to those areas of where a unitary here?
No, unitary here.
Unitary here and the be, the regional council then would remain with jurisdiction in those other areas?
Somebody has believed.
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what it is you're promoting. Because the, if, if Dunedin weren't a unitary council over the whole province, then a, a regional council would remain. Is that what you're advocating?
I, I don't advocate that.
So the regi, the unitary you're talking about is the whole of Atago red? So there'd only be one council.
The red, the whole, I said, thank you.
Any other questions?
You've asked mine.
That was your question.
Just on that issue, it's certainly a, it's a big elephant in the room. But are you aware that at the time of the local government reorganisation, which is like one that we currently have, exactly that proposal was floated by the city and the only authority that wouldn't agree to it was Queenstown? Is that common knowledge or not?
Uh, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you, Mr Lawrence. Appreciate your submission.
Okay, my next submission is, I'm trying to do it all in five minutes for each one actually, but.
Well, you had five minutes. Do you have a, a separate submission?
I have separate submissions. I had three submitted.
No, I'm sorry, you had five minutes for your submission?
No, sorry, I have three submissions. I get five minutes per submission.
We didn't, no, you, you had one, you had one submission time. I'm sorry, we have other people lining up to use the time.
Yeah, well, I've actually got three, three emails from your minute secretary saying, you know, this is, these are submissions I put in. But I did it online, so three online submissions.
They're, they're all under, they're, they're all under one submission here and I apologise if that happened, but we've only allowed enough time. And if we gave you the time now, there are people who won't get hurt tonight and they're here.
If we've got copies of the others.
We don't, we're running on one.
They're all in here.
We've got reserves contributions and housing stock.
So, so I've only done one third of my submission.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, we've read all of your submissions. And, um.
Thank you. You got the most important one actually.
All right, thank you. Dominic Tay. Dunedin Youth Orchestra. Welcome, Dominic.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask a question before I begin. I noticed in the schedule I've been assigned five minutes, but I am doing it on behalf of an organisation.
You, you have ten minutes.
Thank you very much, Nick Hall. So, good evening councillors. It is my pleasure to speak to you now on behalf of the Youth Orchestra. For those of you who I haven't yet met, I'm Dominic Tay. I am both a member of the orchestra and the chairman of the committee which runs it. So tonight I want to talk to you about the orchestra and about what we do and about why our orchestra is important to the city of Dunedin. We have applied for a civic grant of up to, up to ten thousand dollars. And I'd like to explain why, why this grant will help our orchestra. So for those of you who don't know us, we have been operating as an orchestra in Dunedin for over forty years now. And the core function of the orchestra is to provide the most talented local under twenty-five year old orchestral musicians with a high quality musical outlet and opportunities for further development. We audition prospective members at the beginning of each year and these members must meet very high standards of our audition panel if they are to join. Now, we currently have sixty-five members, which is an increase on previous years. And that shows the increasing popularity and importance of the orchestra to our community. Now, some members of the orchestra are high school students whose musical talents exceed what is offered at their school orchestras. But the majority of the members of our orchestra study at the University of Atago and Atago Polytechnic. And you might be surprised to learn that most of these members are not actually music students, but they are students of industry, medicine, mathematics, biochemistry, geology, psychology, English, Spanish, early childhood education and other ones that I can't list now because we have limited time. So music is very important for these people, not, not for their career or occupation, but they do have a love for music and we help them, you know, extend that while they can. Now, we perform two concerts each year as an orchestra and the repertoire is made up from the broader orchestral repertoire as well as New Zealand compositions and local compositions from particularly students at the University of Atago. Our concerts are well attended, they're reviewed favourably and we have a wide amount of support from the people of Dunedin. Now, the next concert that we have is actually going to be in two and a half weeks. I have flighters if you'd like them. So that's Saturday the twenty-fourth of May at half past seven in Knox Church. If you want to see us in action, we would love to have you along. Now, behind the organisation, behind the running of the orchestra, there's a committee of volunteers, a mixture of parents and players. And this committee works extremely hard to ensure that our orchestra members have a place to share their passion for orchestral music. Now, as with everything in life, there is a cost involved with this and each concert that we put on costs upwards of eight thousand dollars. Now, this is actually quite small by the standards of other orchestras like the Southern Symphony, small by the standards of the City Dunedin Choir. But for a small non-profit organisation like ours, this kind of one takes considerable effort to find. Our modest income is limited to player subscriptions and ticket sales, both of which are kept quite low in order to encourage participation and attendance. So we must raise our funds from other sources. And back in the day, we used to have national funding for all the youth orchestras in New Zealand from New Zealand Post. And obviously that's not the case anymore. And we currently survive with grants from community organisations like Bendigo Valley, Atago Community Trust and the Lion Foundation. The problem is though, and the reality is, that these funding bodies to which we apply are providing fewer resources each year. And sometimes this is up to fifty percent less than what we require to run the orchestra and our costs are ever increasing. So we are looking at new ways of raising funds and ways of reducing costs. But the fact is, if we are unable to guarantee funds and we are unable to guarantee the continuation of the orchestra, and that is going to be a major loss for Dunedin. Now, the city council has modeled its long term plan around the vision that Dunedin is one of the world's greatest small cities. And we at the Youth Orchestra believe that a lively arts community, including a local youth orchestra, is important for the council to meet this goal. And the existence of such an orchestra in Dunedin actually fits into a number of council strategies. So for example, we have the social wellbeing strategy, which advocates for connected people living in vibrant and cohesive communities. So we are a training orchestra and through this aspect of our, of our organisation, we are able to connect young musicians with opportunities and networks for their futures. As an example here, many of the members will go on to or already play in the Southern Symphony. And we also connect the world of music with members of the Dunedin public who are as attented thoroughly appreciative of our concerts. We keep the cost of our concert admission very low. In fact, all primary and intermediate aged children are free to attend because we want to encourage the youngest members of our communities into the arts. Now, the social wellbeing strategy also looks at education and of course Dunedin is a great city of education. And being part of an orchestra provides a musical education that cannot be learned elsewhere. Philippa Harris, who is the general manager of the Symphony, notes that youth orchestras provide young orchestral musicians the chance to develop skills that they could not acquire on their own or in private lessons, such as the ability to work as a team, working with their colleagues to ensure a coherent tone and style. And obviously skills such as teamwork do have applications outside of an orchestra as well. But it goes without saying that within DYO, we are training the next generation of the Southern Symphony. We are training the next generation of the New Zealand Symphony Orchestra and we are training the next generation of orchestras overseas as well. And we've actually had two of our recent members who have gone on to musical careers in Europe in the last twelve months, which is very exciting. And that co-man members share their knowledge with the generation of musicians below them through tuitionings, both privately and through programmes such as Saturday Morning Music Classes. Now, the other major council strategy with which DYO aligns is of course the Arts and Culture Strategy. But since this is in the process of being drafted, I can't really comment on what its content may be. We are looking forward to seeing the publication of this strategy later in the year. And we have worked with, to some, to some degree, helping council develop this. And I would just like to stress that we would really like to see in this new strategy an allowance for funding applications for the general running costs of arts organisations. Now, because we've got the running of our orchestra down to a very fine arts with auditions in February, concerts in May and September, most of our expenditure falls under general running costs. And that actually prohibits our applications to funding pools like the Creative Communities Grants, which already exist, because these are for special projects and we don't really have much room in our schedule for these special projects. So this previous strategy has let our organisation, the Youth Orchestra, fall between the cracks. And I know that the city of Dunedin would really appreciate this council's assistance and help them pull the orchestra back out of those cracks. An arts and culture strategy that allows community groups such as ours to continue running like a well-oiled machine without needing to differ from our schedule and put on special projects will guarantee this city's reputation as one of the world's greatest small cities for lovers of the arts. So I guess as I've explained here, the Youth Orchestra sits quite nicely within two of council's strategies for the future and we are eligible for a civic grant. And a grant of up to ten thousand dollars, again, I say, I say up to, we're not greedy. A grant of up to ten thousand dollars will help the orchestra by offsetting our running costs and reducing the amount of time that our committee spends applying for funding. And that'll allow us to ensure that we can put more effort into actually running the orchestra and providing new opportunities for our members and for our community as well. So a civic grant will help the city also by ensuring that our local asset of the Dunedin Youth Orchestra is around for future generations of young musicians. Now, I know that council funding is limited, I know you know that as well, but the funding provided by civic grant for the Youth Orchestra is not going to be wasted. I've provided some figures about the running of the orchestra and you will see by looking at our recent financial statements and our budget for the first semester this year, we are very interested in cutting our own costs to remain a financially viable organisation. While I've been the chairperson over the past three years now, we have changed our concert venue, our printing supplier and our advertising methods to ensure that our costs can be cut, but we can still provide the same service and products for a fraction of the price. So we're doing what we can to ensure that our orchestra can continue within a tight economic frame and your help in doing this would, would be so much appreciated. So council funding of any amount would be gratefully received. We would put it to good use maintaining Dunedin's position as a vibrant and creative city with cultural, educational and enjoyable opportunities for talented young orchestral musicians as well as the wider community of supportive cultural appreciators. So I encourage you all to support our civic, civic grant application for the Dunedin Youth Orchestra. Thank you so much for your time on this late evening and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dominic. Councillor Law.
How you doing, Dominic? I just can't help notice here it says in the two thousand and thirteen year, we gave you two thousand two hundred, no, you're two thousand two hundred and eleven. Was there any reason why that was sort of?
Yes, that's right. So last year we did have a special project that we were working towards, which was actually a combined concert with the Auckland Youth Orchestra. So the AYO was doing a travelling tour through the South Island. We were their first stop. And because we are the only major youth orchestra in the southern part of the South Island, we had a combined concert in the town hall. We were able to apply for special funding for that, but we can't do that on a regular basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you and thanks, Dominic, for coming and speaking to us. This doesn't include your two thousand and fourteen forecast, so we've got previous years to go on. But last year, total grants are roughly seventeen K. The up to ten thousand dollars that you're seeking from council would essentially be that same. We're talking that kind of ballpark figure to stay solvent in two thousand and fourteen, around seventeen.
Yeah, we, I actually did submit a draft budget for our first concert, which I hope you've got. And I can give you a copy if you don't have it.
No, no, I haven't, yeah.
Okay, that's great. I can confirm that since we put in this application, we have received, but we have heard back from one of the, the Lion Foundation, which we hadn't heard back from pending when I put the application in. We only received four thousand dollars from, from them. We're very grateful for that. But we are anticipating a shortfall this semester. We're anticipating a shortfall next semester also. So we're really hoping that council is able to help tide us over with regard to that.
You mentioned creative communities, but where, if, if anywhere, does the Youth Orchestra circuit fit into CNZ's broader funding models? I know that symphonies and orchestras are politically recently contentious within CNZ at the moment, but I don't, and I don't know whether you're caught up in that or not. But are there any opportunities for creative New Zealand funding or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Perez.
Thank you for coming along, Dominic. It's good to see you still advocating for the Youth Orchestra. You've been doing it for a number of years now.
Thank you, councillor.
If you did get up to ten thousand dollars, I mean, what, what difference does that really make to the orchestra? I mean, would there be extra tutoring or would that just go, I see you've got funds sitting in the National Bank, term deposit. What, what, where would the, where would the funds be applied?
Okay, so with.
What would be, what would be the difference if, if you didn't get the funds?
Yep. With, with regards to some of the money that we've got tied up in term deposits, we can't use some of this for a running cost because some of it is a donation from another charitable organisation which has been specified to be for a scholarship for orchestra members. So a lot of the money that you see, you might, you might say, oh, they've got a lot of money there. But unfortunately, that is tied up as, as a scholarship. So we're unable to use that to, to help keep the orchestra running. And I must confess, I've forgotten the second part of your question there.
I was just wondering how you would apply the extra funds if you were to get them.
Oh, right, okay.
And I know that you have tutoring workshops and, and what have you. Would that, would that's, would those sort of things be enhanced or?
Well, I'd, I'd certainly like to think so. We offer a weekend workshop once per semester. If we could run that more often, that'd be great. Normally, we try and place it right in the middle of the semester and these weekend workshops are good for two purposes. They're really good for helping the musicians get, sort of get in gear and, and learn the music. And they're also good for refining technique. But you can't necessarily do those things both at the same time. So having two weekend workshops would be great if we have, if we can get the money for it. One, sort of a third of the way through the semester and then secondly, again, a couple of weeks before the concert.
Yeah, I'd just like to think that the fund will apply to something positive rather than, say, advertising or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions? Dominic, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Would, would you mind if I handed out some flyers?
No, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shaun Hogan, Broad Bay School. Shaun Hogan, Broadway School. Right. Thank you for coming. You have 10 minutes at your disposal now. You have the floor.
Thank you, councillor. And I'm hoping I'm almost the last person through this evening. It's been an awful long session.
The last person fighting behind the pillar.
It can feel a bit more of an endurance race than a sprint, but you're almost at the end. And obviously, this is the most important part and the bit that you really want to listen to. I'm not on my own tonight. I'm here with John Goldstone, who's the principal at Broadway School. And also someone who's here from Portobello School Board of Trustees. And I guess we're here because we're so very concerned about the reopening of submissions on the Peninsula Walkway. So what I'd like to do is I've just popped around some supplementary information, which will become clear as we go along. I thought I might quickly talk through some of the main features from my submission and then proceed. So Broadway School is a full primary, taking children from five till 13, and was currently growing our role. We've recently got a third teacher. The original proposal way back in 2005, we believed and set since that date, gave the school great hope that before many of our children go up and move on to high school, they would actually get the benefits of a safe access to Portobello. All of the children who go to our school either live in Broadway or on the road to Portobello or in Portobello itself. So the existing expectation for the school and for the Board of Trustees was that the council plan would be followed and that over the 2015 to 2017 window, the Broadway settlement would be joined to Portobello. At that time, it seemed a long way away, but welcome. And we believed that it wasn't going to change. And we wanted it for our children, because we believe that increased access to the unique environment that we live in would just give increased opportunities for the children to fully experience that environment, making that foreshore area more accessible and child-friendly, giving a safe and secure place for schoolchildren to use on their daily commute to school. Currently, effectively, the whole of the coastline, other than Sandy Beach area and Rocky Beach area, is effectively closed off to the school, as it would be far too risky for children to use these areas, given there's no separation between cars and pedestrians and little or no walkable virtue. It also obviously would give new opportunities for physical education, which is an area that the school is really trying to work on. The other options that were put forward, to be honest, fill us with dismay. Option A would only join the settlement of Broadway to Portobello in 2023. Options B and C would see no substantive improvement in Broadway till about the same time, by which time our current oldest students, due to leave school next year, will be old enough to come back and teach in our school. And our current newest pupils would have left and be well settled into high school. So for us, by changing the current plan, council would seem to be limiting access, safety, and opportunity for an entire generation of Broadway schoolchildren. And that's the guts of the first submission that we made. Since then, I had a little bit more time and a little bit more time to look at some of the figures that have been sent around by council, and that's created the supplementary submission. Councilors will have heard, or are going to hear, some real concerns from parts of our community in Broadway about the fact that the original plan was opened up again for resubmission at all. And then for a whole host of issues related to information provided by council to help inform and assist the public in making quite a difficult decision. You will or have heard concerns about the potentially incorrect use of census data to estimate community size along the Peninsula Road, which we feel overstates the size of the community along Section A around threefold. I'm sure that residents in Tomahawk and Ocean Grove would be amazed to know that they're logged as habitual users of the Peninsula Road. Also, we've seen multiple submissions where the person's intention has been confused by the choices presented. So people who ticked the box for Option A, but from their comments clearly wanted the current option. Surely, the current option would be Option A, to see the world in that way. I can understand how that happened. And finally, over the weekend, you may have heard that there was a computer issue that invalidated 19 submissions. It was only identified by a member of the Broadway community, reading through and noticing that certain submissions, instead of being for Option A or Option B, whatever, just had "not applicable" in them. This was brought to attention of council, and I believe they've resubmitted and redrafted that. Cumulatively, all of these factors have tested the forbearance and trust of those involved from the community. I decided to limit what I was going to say today to a single issue, which was road safety, which I've spent a little bit of time looking at. Because again, I feel there's something to be said here. On initial examination of the council materials, it looked fairly clear. Four and a half thousand movements in Section A, creating 45 crashes over a five-year period. Then in Section C, Broadway to Portobello, 1,750 vehicle movements and 27 crashes. It had appeared that the total for the first section had more crashes of the same caliber than the Broadway section. Although on a volume basis, maybe there's a little bit more of a risk of accidents in the Broadway to Portobello section. And that was part of my original submission. But look behind the figures and a different picture emerges. Resource consent application from council breaks down those crashes. The table of crash rates is attached in Appendix 1. And from that, and you have to do a tiny bit of adding up, in this, Section 5 and 6 is the Vauxhall to Glenfale section. Section A in Vauxhall had an unusually high number of non-injury crashes, about 24, compared to Section C, Broadway. These are usually discounted, and in fact, in the council models, these are discounted when assessing risk on the open road. Section A and Section C have rather more similar rates of minor crashes, 17 in the Vauxhall area and 13 in the Broadway area. Again, normally, these are discounted for open road state highway risk factors. I'll come back to that. It's a little different in this case. With most analyses, the only thing you're really interested in are the serious crashes and obviously the fatal crashes. Fortunately, we had none of those. But here, the difference is really very marked. Over the same period, Section C, Broadway to Portobello, suffered eight serious crashes, double the number experienced by the first section of road. Of course, the real situation is far more concerning because of the big difference in volume. The Broadway to Portobello section had double the number of serious crashes, and much less than half the volume of traffic. To put it in its most stark terms, on this data, the risk of suffering a serious crash on the Broadway to Portobello section is five times that of suffering a serious crash on Section A. In presenting summary information, council has, it seems to me, inadvertently obscured rather than clarified the accident data. Council did however make two additional measures available to help us assess risk. The first of those is the one that I wanted to really talk about. It's called collective risk. You'll see at the very, very back page, where we have the little printout that council produced, it gives a definition of collective risk. The number of injury crashes over a road section that could have resulted in either serious injury or fatality. If you add up those, this isn't difficult. We know that Section A had four serious and 17 minor crashes, giving a total of 21. Section C, Broadway to Portobello, had eight serious and 13 minor crashes, giving exactly the same total of 21. And yet, the Vauxhall section was assessed as a high risk and the Broadway section a medium to high risk, which just makes no sense. I did ask for the methodology that was used. And I've said here that I didn't get anything back. That's not true now. At 5:17 this evening, I got something back, which was well after this had been published. It was what I expected. They're using a different methodology from the one that is described in the flyer. So when they say, if I get it right, collective safety risk, the number of injury crashes over a road section that could have resulted in either serious injury or a fatality. Actually, what they've done is take those crashes, analyse them, look at how each crash happened, and try and project forward how many potential casualties may be caused in the future. And from that, create a variable, which is fine and valid. It's just not what they said they'd done, which is unfortunate. The final kicker is they also haven't added up the right number of crashes. It's been based on 20 crashes on the Broadway to Portobello section instead of 21. And that one difference in crash is probably why the risk levels are different. So to conclude, we're rather worried that from the information that's been presented, people might easily have formed a view that Section A was the more dangerous piece of road. But my fear is exactly the reverse is the case. And I have to conclude that if a council is serious about preventing the most dangerous crashes with the greatest risk of serious injury or death, they must complete Section C from Broadway to Portobello as a matter of urgency. The fact the area includes two schools and four other related child facilities, as well as being a route that we share with tourist coaches and trucks, makes this a real necessity. And finally, there was a plan. It was a good plan. It was carefully fashioned. It was all about communities and it was all about safety. And I'd ask that you please stick with the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Wilson.
We've had a number of submissions, and I'm going to be consistent and ask you the same question about... I mean, this isn't necessarily a project about winners and losers. This is about a better thing for everyone on the Peninsula and for Dunedin. And a number of submissions have suggested that actually, we should just make this whole project a whole lot quicker. Now, at the moment, and any of you who are at the Portobello meeting, I said, well, you know what? Why not trust leadership and offer as rate codes, and you can only vouch for yourselves on this. Are you prepared to consider a higher targeted rate for the Peninsula?
Personally, yes, I am. But I also thought about this question because you mentioned it at the meeting at Portobello. And what I thought was usually a targeted rate is used when there's a specific thing that everyone needs to pay for, like a stadium, or when, contrarily, there's something which is only going to benefit a tiny number of people, like a flood scheme, where just the properties that are affected are often targeted for a targeted rate. But what we're talking about here is essential safety works that are already planned, scheduled, and budgeted with companion funding from central government. So the idea that that would be subject to a targeted rate, particularly given that it costs $8 million for just one section of that road, our section, and our community size across both Broadway and Portobello is 1,100, I struggle with that. It's not a private road. The benefits of the improvement will be there, not for people on the peninsula only, but for everybody who uses that road, every coach, every tour bus, every camper. So unless council is also suggesting making the whole road a toll road, or taxing the cruise ships, or any of the other things that would be used to raise funding, I think it would be difficult. Personally, I'd be happy to pay, because I'm very frightened by some of the figures that I've worked through. I just don't think that it's workable, but that's...
Well, and I think I'm looking at speeding up the process, not necessarily paying for the whole thing. And the other part I'll add to that is I appreciate that that's a normal approach in Dunedin City. In other centres like Central Tago, a lot of the stuff is done by targeted rates. And this may be the opening of this, getting things quite differently. So I'm just... And so in that light, could I understand from the other two members who are here, if they're happy to give their own personal views on that?
Yes, I'm happy to consider a targeted rate, as I think that's a great plan. However, the diverse nature of students and families that come to Portobello still come from very low socioeconomic areas and so... And especially given that consideration, I doubt that people will be able to afford that. I think I'd also say that are we not already paying? But the whole purpose of races, the provision and maintenance of safe walkways to allow our children, 150 in this case, to get to the front of school, this is already provided for in the majority of the communities actually in Dunedin itself. If our schools were in Dunedin, we wouldn't even have this conversation. So we're already paying for the maintenance of those safe walkways within Dunedin itself. And I think it's reasonable that we should expect the same safe walkways for our children without being targeted.
And we've had the same submission from people who haven't got this even on a budget yet for their areas today, that if we looked at it evenly throughout the city, then, you know, taking that argument further, it's actually, we would say, let's get footpaths done in other areas and either put the rates up or spread out the work for longer. So that's the other risk that you've got, is that we start putting footpaths around Brighton and Woodrundall and say, actually, all footpaths have to take longer to get. So I'm just trying to find a mechanism that can get this work done more quickly, where the benefit lies. Otherwise, there may be other consequences. I'm being the devil's advocate. You'll appreciate that at my job to me.
Councillor Thompson.
One of the issues I'm interested in is what people will actually do regardless of where the work is done. And looking at the maps of Broadway, I'm trying to work out... This is not a challenge, it's a question, okay? I'm trying to work out, I look at where the houses are, and I look at the notion, by and large, people take the shortest route. And so going from, it seems to me anyway, going from the majority of houses, it's unlikely that many people are going to go effectively, in many cases, backtracking down to the main road and then along. They're going to continue to use, is it Robotry's and... I can't remember the other one along there.
Yeah. The roads are complicated, I think. And having looked at them, I was looking, I looked on Google Maps a little earlier and sort of got a feel for what it looked like from there. And then I went down to Street View. And what you must remember is what's offered as the safe route for kids are the backroads. The vast majority, in fact, all by one of those backroads, doesn't have any separation between cars and...
I'm not denying that for a moment. And I'm not denying the unsuitability of those roads. What I'm trying to understand is what... I'm trying to get a sense of what will people actually do. Are they going to continue to use those routes, which I have a suspicion that that's what human nature will drive them to do, as opposed to having to use those roads anyway, but to go in a different direction to take a longer route?
I think it'll be arranged, and it depends where they live. For some of them, what would make an awful lot more sense would be to go down to the front to walk along the safe area and come back over. That's for people that basically are at both ends of town. I think people who live at the top of the street with the school on and just around the corner, they'll just walk down. And that would just make sense. But what you'd see is, one of the things that adds to the risk around the school is of course, the cars coming from further up the road and from the Portobello side, where there is no alternative but to drive. By creating a safe walkway, you create an alternative, which means you actually reduce the road traffic, which makes those roads safer as soon as you get off the main road. It also makes the immediate environment of the school safer. So you get a number of advantages. The other thing is at the moment, and this is what I was getting at with the serious crash information, all of those parents are driving their kids along a road that appears to be five times more dangerous than the other highest-risk road along the Peninsula. So by reducing the volume and the use of that road for that sort of local traffic, you actually might be reducing the risk as well. Plus, the improvements to that road should reduce the crashes. So that's what I'm thinking about.
Councillor Intouch.
Just to follow on from that, I've walked around those roads recently. Myself, I get my head around this photography. I understand what you mean about them. It's not quite what they look like on Google Maps. Having said that though, my understanding is that it's the intention of the construction to put it on the seaside or the harbourwood side of the road. So for most parents that are going to be sending their kids to school, those kids would need to cross, go down the hill, cross the main road, onto the other side, walk along, cross back in a spot which isn't ideal for crossing, and then hit that red street. So I guess, yeah, just testing their hypothesis.
Again, it's about whether transitions happen and how well engineered that is. And I think that will be partly for the community to be working with council and council planners to manage those transitions. Because, you know, it's interesting that the County Bayern, they have been looking for a walking bus for the last period of time. And they were told that the roads were not allowed because there's no a safe for the kids to go. Put in the walkway, a walking bus with their kids immediately started. They have to cross the same road, but you can manage that risk with good planning. And I believe the council can produce good plans.
Councillor Wylie.
Thank you. I don't know why I'm going to weigh in on the second-to-last submitted, but listening to this all day, one of the things that I've got to looking at is the ODT and the exit... to this all day, one of the things that I've got to looking at is the ODT and the accidents that have taken place, especially when you put these figures in front of us. Now, I'm looking here from Wednesday, the fourteenth of March, two thousand and twelve, and Neil Collins is talking about more barriers to stop cars going in. Doing some other searches, I see cars, driver error, conditions, things like that. Is the road going to be improved for that as such, or, because to me, the road is difficult and needs a lot of care, and most of it's driver error.
It does, and, I mean, how many crashes over, over all crashes are driver error, but roads can make something more or less dangerous. And what struck me is, I was struck by one of the contractors who was describing how, as part of his normal work, he was unable to stay on his side of the road because of the extreme bends between Broad Bay and Portobello. And I found that quite powerful because in my head, I'm thinking, okay, we've got a trucking who's doing his very best but actually can't stay on his side of the road, he needs a carriage coming the other way, that's not a good combination. And I think anything that can be done, and by making a road wider, by 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 fashioning a slightly safer road, this is a road safety initiative. And if we can make that stretch of road wider and safer, we might just end up with less crashes, and that's really what this is all about. I don't think you'll ever eliminate them, and, you know, on my analysis of it, a number of crashes happen at night, at twenty, all the things that you expect with increased risk. Nevertheless, there is this this unfortunate cluster of crashes on that section of road. Anybody who drives it will know that as soon as, almost as soon as you leave Broad Bay, those bends get tighter and tougher, and it's just a bigger chance of having an accident and actually hitting something coming the other way. Plus, obviously, if you've got a walkway that goes out a little further, perhaps a few less people will end up getting their feet wet on the way to work because there'll be a more forgiving road with an extra metre, two metres, three metres of land before they get water.
Do you think that having the road be that wide enough that even a bus and a truck meeting will be safely passing those?
I think it's never going to be as straightforward a road as some, but I think what we're looking at is what changes can be made to make it safer. And of course, you've got the advantage on the plans that are being put before you, that you're separating out pedestrians and cyclists who currently are sharing that tight space with those other groups. So for me, it's, it's, it's easy, but then, you know, I live there. But but honestly, when I was going through looking at the crash statistics, I did become very concerned.
Okay, I applaud your passion for this, yeah. Questions? Thank you very much for your submission. Very detailed, very well thought through. Thank you.
Your children are lucky to have somebody who's got a bit more detail in their midst.
Brian Dixon. Brian, you're the lucky last.
Yeah, I'm sorry for you.
Now, are you, Brian, are you representing yourself, or?
I am in this case. Yep. And you're asking that because I'm a member of a number of organisations who could have represented, I guess.
Well, now that you've acknowledged that, you've got five minutes.
I've got some background information that sort of supported my submission, which, yeah, my submission, councillor Benton Pope talked about the elephant in the room before, and I think the biggest elephant in this room at the moment is the issue of climate change. The IPCC report recently released, just since my submission, highlights that and and proposes a number of things that that regions need to do. Government has has abrogated that responsibility, said that that's really your responsibility to deal with. I have more topics to do. And so so that means that really it's, you know, it's councillors like yours that have to be thinking about what what the issues are. So the actions that the IPCC refers to really say that at the moment, if you're an investor or entrepreneur, you should be putting your money in the clean energy sector. We can't afford to waste time and energy in pursuit of fossil fuels that are now quite unlikely to be given, to be viable, given the high cost in terms of carbon loading of that fuel and energy use. Our city has emerging opportunities to benefit from technologies and employment associated with a more positive future, but only if the leaders now make those decisions to move in that direction. And I realise that the plan doesn't specifically address these issues. I know that there's an energy plan in place that is meant to be addressing these issues, and I know that there are committees that have been formed in the past which address aspects of these issues. But right now, I'm actually urging that you establish a new body that has the power and the authority to investigate, plan and implement, and then monitor innovative projects around reducing the impact of climate change, and I refer to a couple of those in my main submission. That body needs to be able to avoid the red tape and involve representatives across all sectors, like council, university business, all of our communities and the public sector, where they have a collective, a cooperative mandate from their agencies to be involved in that decision-making, and actual authority to be involved in decisions. While your energy plan envisages some relevant actions, now's the time for even more decisive changes. And in my oral summary, summary of the oral submission, I've actually set out some of those, so that I'm actually offering some specifics. So in terms of the energy conservation measures, there's the suggestion of urge of review of the street lighting, looking at the energy efficient alternatives, looking at light spill, and in my main submission, I took about Te Kipaua, that's a good example of where that's been done very effectively with benefits for tourism in terms of visibility of the night sky. And also, looking at public lighting of facilities, I was at Colling Park this evening and noticed that all of the lights were blazing there, an hour after everybody had, anybody on that park had left. And from having gone home past there from time to time, I can guarantee those are probably still burning now and probably till nine o'clock. And that's, that's just a ridiculous use of of our energy resource and budget of this council. I'm suggesting that we look at low fee or zero, zero interest loans in terms of home insulation, because that would actually be an investment, because over the next five years, technologies, actually, the technologies in that area are going to become more efficient and cheaper as they have over the past five years. So that would be a value gain for council. Looking at energy projects, there are a number of things that council should be investing in, facilitating clean technology, renewable energy production, research, looking at proven technologies, but also encouraging product, city-based projects into developing new clean technologies, and I've listed some of those. Encouraging business and council to look at cogeneration, a lot of heat generated in this room here, which, you know, and and heat can be injected back in for for use elsewhere or as energy into the grid. Looking at encouraging the Dunedin-based industries for solar energy systems, wind turbines, solar water heating, and actually getting involved in community-based projects alongside the university would make a lot of sense. I've referred to the forest resource and and what I see is an unbelievable waste there of sending unprocessed logs offshore, and that's something that council may have some ability to influence. Number of benefits from these are good local jobs, use of available expertise, investment in the city, including probably ethical use of the Poi Puri Fund, it couldn't be used in a better way, I would suggest. Being part of the global energy technology shift, looking at extensive and growing markets, broad sustainability criteria being met, and substantial tourism potential, as well as increased self-sufficiency for residents in the city. The other items I've put in there include something from the most unlikely source I could expect last month, just after I've made this submission, no, no advertisement for energy cell, but they do have a, and also B and C, who who have put in this feature article on pine-based wood processing in Nelson that's been in place for thirty-five years, a very strong sustainable use of forest resources, where they use every component of their forest. Because I'm aware that some people around this table still have the view that they're that we should be like Taranaki, I've actually put in a summary of something I wrote last year about why we're not comparable to Taranaki, and that that would be worth reading because the situation where Taranaki was developed with energy projects thirty years ago was a totally different animal. It included subsidies, government subsidies and project, industry subsidies that were invested back into the community. The other thing I've put in here is about, and it's from the industry itself, the petrochemical industry, one of the latest, it's just come off the press the second of May, and that's why gas won't cut greenhouse gas emissions. Gas is not a substitute fuel, it's not a transitional fuel, and we need to look at the alternatives. Thank you very much for your patience and hard work and the staff and the media, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate your submission. Are there any questions? I think we're questioned now. That's fine, don't take it. This is plenty of nighttime reading. Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you, councillors.